All right, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It is Tuesday, May 11th, 2021. And this is the pre-described time for the Board of County Commissioners for Washoe County Meeting. It's our regular business meeting for Tuesday. And with that, I will call the meeting to order. And I'll ask our Mr. Darren Griffin, our guest, who leaves in the suits of fact, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Nice to see you this morning. We appreciate it. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Of course. Bob Lucy, Chair.
Here.
Von Hartung, Vice Chair.
Here.
Alexis Hill.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Present.
Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager Eric Brown. Assistant District Attorney David Watzfield.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galacini, your County Clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And before we get into our first items this morning, I want to make sure, I want to, I want to make a quick statement. And lay some ground rules. Last meeting, we've had some, obviously, some challenges with some individuals within our, our audience. We want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak. And so what we'll ask is if you come to the, if you are in the chambers, that you have a mask or a mask covering, a face covering on at all times while sitting in the, in the chambers. You may remove your mask when you come up and speak at the podium during public comment. But we ask that if you, once you leave the podium, that you put your mask back on. If you are asked to leave, it'll be the once and one time only. There won't be any, there won't be any second chances in this. This is a business meeting. We try to conduct ourselves as such. And if we don't, then we will, we will remove you from these chambers for these proceedings. So, with that being said, I think we all understand what the ground rules are, and we will get into our meeting. Mr. Manager, can I move to item three, sir?
And presentation by Reno Tahoe Airport CEO Darren Griffin. To provide an update and overview of current business operations at the Reno Tahoe International Airport.
Mr. Griffin, welcome. It's nice to see you. Thank you for coming this morning and providing us a little bit of an update on what's going on at the airport.
Good morning, Chairman Lucy, Commissioners, County Manager Brown. It's great to see you in person. I think this is my first in-person public speaking engagement since I stepped into this role last August. So it's great to see everybody. I'm going to take about 15 minutes and update you on your airports. Talk a little bit about how we have made it through the pandemic, what our recovery looks like, what our air service looks like for the summer. Talk a little bit about our development plans at both airports. And certainly, welcome to any questions, anytime. I'm here to, to answer anything that you may want to hear about the airport. Very quickly, I think you know who we are, but we are the, as the Airport Authority, the owner and operator of Reno Tahoe International and Reno Stead. An outstanding nine-member board. And I really want to emphasize that since I stepped into this role, the nine-member board representing Washoe County, City of Reno, City of Sparks, and the RSCBA has been incredibly supportive of me during a pretty amazing time, led by our Chairwoman Jessica Sefraza, who has been really instrumental in helping me hit the ground running really quickly because there's no shortage of issues, as you all understand. I want to thank you for sending us great trustees to represent you on our board, starting with Nat Caricelli, who is right at the very end of his eight years of service to the airport. Really fantastic eight years, and Nat has been instrumental in helping us fund air service retention and attraction, which is critically important to the region. And so we will miss him. I've enjoyed getting to know him in the one year that I have worked with him. But look forward to welcoming his replacement on your agenda later today and continuing on with all the great work. Also, Lisa Gianoli represents you on the Airport Authority, I think, on Zoom with us today. Lisa, in her financial expertise and knowledge of state government, has also been really helpful to me in my first year. As you all know, the airport is a really important economic engine. In a normal non-pandemic year, more than $3 billion in economic impact. We have 280 employees-ish and 3,000 employees work at the airport in total in a good year. Something less than that right now, of course, but we are working to get back up to full speed. In 2019, we had four and a half million passengers, 10 passenger airlines, three cargo carriers, and Customs and Border Protection, which we still have, thankfully, to staff our single international direct flight to Guadalajara, Mexico, which came back last August and is doing well. And we're grateful for, for, for Valorous Airlines continuing to serve our region. It's difficult right now, international travel, as you all know, and they've hung in there, and the flight has done well. And of course, we are an enterprise function. We have our own police, fire, we maintain all our own assets, generate our own revenues, and pay our own bills as a, as an airport authority. It's been a great time to step into a new CEO role. There's nowhere to go but up, right? And the air carrier industry has never had an impact like the pandemic. And nothing compares to the economic impact on the airlines, on airports. We virtually lost all of our customers a year ago. And every airport had to pivot to really slashing costs. With passengers, there goes the revenue, and I'll show you a chart on that in a minute. We had to freeze positions, we implemented furloughs, pay freezes, pay reductions, everything we could do to hang on to jobs at the end of the day and to not have to separate employees, which I'm grateful to say we have not had to do. We had to impose a max requirement last November at the request of Governor Sicilac, which then later came through the TSA and the Biden Administration shortly thereafter. Anyways, it's still in effect at the airport and onboard all aircraft until at least September, and we'll see where it goes from there. We used to advertise air service, and we started advertising safety and health and cleanliness and sanitation to try and reinstall consumer confidence in the air travel experience. We're still doing that today, but pivoting now to advertising air service again. And really, a deep felt appreciation for all of our frontline essential workers, our custodians, fighting COVID-19 in every restroom, on every surface airborne, wherever it may exist. In a large public transportation facility, you're always fighting viruses, and they have been at the cutting edge of this, and we are truly grateful for them. Just a couple charts for you on how we're doing financially. The green line is what we're actually spending, and the black line was our budget. And so I'm really proud of our organization and every employee contributing to cost reduction, understanding the situation that we're in, what it takes to save jobs right now. And you can see the previous couple of years there in blue and purple. It's kind of a record year in terms of every single employee contributing to cost savings. We've also held a lot of positions vacant. We had a, a pretty large amount of turnover, people retiring because they could, or people simply deciding they didn't want to work in a public transportation facility during a pandemic and voluntarily leaving. That created opportunity for us to save money, and we have, and that's really helped us weather the storm. Revenues, I'll, I'll start with the blue line. And the blue line is what happened to revenues as we got kind of full underway with the pandemic. And I'm sure this chart is pretty similar for most airports, that as passengers stopped flying, airport revenues also follow that in many ways. Thankfully, we were able to weather that. The black line was what we set our revenue budget for this fiscal year, understanding the situation that we were in. And the green line is how we're doing. And so we've been able to do a little bit better than budget through most of this fiscal year. And you see the uptick last month, which represents spring break. And that as the vaccination program really got ramped up and rolling, consumer confidence is following that. And we were, to be quite honest, surprised at the amount of people flying again for spring break. Not only out of this region, but the visitors coming in to catch the end of the ski and snowboard season or just visit the great outdoors. It made a big difference at the airport, and of course, a big difference to our balance sheet. And I also want to call out the CARES and CARISA funding that Congress appropriated for all airports. With our share of that, we have funded a lot of our payroll. We have funded the direct expenses associated with the pandemic, whether it's extra cleaning, sanitation, chemicals, spacing out people, the touchless experiences, all the costs associated with that. And of course, debt service, just helping us pay every bill on time. And we are grateful to Congress for that. This chart shows the passenger growth. So you all are familiar with the growth in this region far better than I am. In the six years leading up to where we're entering the pandemic, really good, steady growth at the airport, which is just a barometer of economic health in a region. And every year, about 6% growth, great to see. And then you fall off the cliff for the pandemic, and the, the pink bar there in calendar year 2020, probably hadn't seen a number that low in many, many decades here. And that's the hole we're climbing out of right now. We are climbing out of it. And I am really pleased to report that today, we are averaging since March between 75 and 80% of our 2019 passenger levels, which is 10 to 15% better than most airports in America. It's the great outdoors, it's the leisure offerings here, it's the nightlife, it's the blend of all of those things that this region has to offer that has people coming to visit us. And we count them at the airport, so we know exactly how we're doing this year. We are showing a recovery there in that chart. I actually think we'll do better than that. We're off to a good start here since March, and I, I think we will recover quicker than that. A lot of economists are predicting a three-to-five-year recovery for airports and airlines. I think we're on the short end of that, that we are closer to that three-year mark you can see there in 2022, 2023. We think we're getting back close to where we were in 2019, just based on where we're at today, based on the continued growth in the region. Those out years is not a forecast, that's just aspirational thinking. We want to plan for growth in the region. Growth has continued through the pandemic, as we all know, the influx of people coming from different places to work from home and, and commute to wherever they may go. We think we will find new passengers and new trips, with people commuting to the Bay Area or Southern California who work from home now, who wouldn't use to take a business trip. And that coupled with leisure travel potentially could really take us to places we haven't been before. There will be headwinds, no doubt. I have no idea whether we'll get to six or seven million in that timeframe, but it wouldn't surprise me for it to happen this decade. So it's important for us to understand how that may happen, what our infrastructure needs are to support the growth in the region. The summer is a really good example. Spring break has been great, but where we are at right now is a really good place with our network. And the non-stop flights that we have from our airport, this was something most airports were really concerned about six months ago. Flights were pulled back, as you all know. The airlines parked a lot of airplanes, they separated a lot of employees, and no region knew when it might get its non-stop flights back. We were at the bare minimum last summer. And we have seen a steady return of our non-stop flights. And you can see this month, we have as many non-stops as we did two years ago, pre-pandemic. And in July, we are flirting with having the most ever non-stop flights from our region that we have ever had. 25 would be a record. The schedule literally changes every day, if you're watching airline schedules. And so we're either going to tie the record or beat the record in July, along with the seats in the market, which is really important, that we get the biggest airplanes that we can for the best possible comfort in flights. And so we see that upgauging, we call it, of aircraft happening in our market now. But it's a really good story. Many regions across the country do not have the air service that they had pre-pandemic. They are lagging behind. The beach markets are doing well for all the obvious reasons. People want to go to Hawaii and Florida and places like Reno Tahoe and the great outdoors. So, so we are thankful to be on the winning side of this equation right now, but we don't take it for granted at all. This is our non-stop map this month. You can see a lot of those non-stops on the long hauls circled in black. We lost those through the pandemic. Last summer, a lot of those flights were not with us. They started coming back in the winter, and New York comes back this month. We got Chicago, Dallas, Atlanta back in the wintertime. Houston came back this spring. Guadalajara came back last September. We've had service on the shorter haul routes, but this is really important to really make our connectivity to the rest of the world as to reestablish those hub airports, those long-haul flights. And so really happy to be able to tell you that we have them all. You can buy those tickets right now, they're here this summer. And a couple additions that we honestly weren't expecting. Jackson Hole from Reno on Allegiant is a really good example of the airlines really following the revenue, following the demand, and that is the great outdoors. People wanting to go to Yellowstone National Park, that's the best way to get there through Jackson Hole Airport. And so we have that opportunity this summer. Also, starting in June is Charlotte on American Airlines. We've been trying to get Charlotte for about 10 years, and all of a sudden, we just got a call from American, and they're ready to do it. And you're like, why now? And it's because it's not us necessarily going to Charlotte, it's everybody else coming here and coming through Charlotte, which is American Airlines' second-largest hub. It's a great network. We're grateful to get it, and we know if it doesn't perform this summer, it won't be here next summer. And so we're really focusing now on what it takes to get, you know, these airplanes as full as we can. Charlotte alone offers 80 domestic connections. And when I look at that map, I think of it in reverse. It's not us going to all of those places, it's all of those places able to get here with one stop. And that is really what's exciting about this. What's not on this map is the Europe network and Latin American network, which of course, it's kind of difficult to do right now and probably more pain than it's worth. But if we do well this summer, it will be back, and a really great way to get to Latin America or Europe as well. So we're working with American Airlines, but we're working with all of our airline partners to try and make these hub airports, these long-haul routes, as successful as we possibly can. And that really pivots us, instead of working hard to get flights, we're working hard now to get people in the airplanes with a whole bunch of partners there because we certainly can't do it alone. And marketing in our region is really important. Working with Regional Air Service Corporation, marketing-specific routes, getting Dallas Love Field was important. Getting Houston was important, so RASK is supporting us in marketing efforts. The RSCBA is a huge partner here in going into Charlotte, Atlanta, New York, and working on activating those marketplaces to make them aware of what the product offerings are and the customer experience offerings are here in our region. And really, that is the key to getting people into airplanes. It's activating both sides. We're working hard on our catchment area, roughly 50 to 60 miles in every direction. So we're working hard around the lake, Mendon, Ferley, Fallon, the North Valleys, the growth there. All of those represent areas that are growing right now that are future customers for the airport. And so we want to make sure they know what we have to offer them, along with all of our customers in the Reno Tahoe urban region. I'll pivot now to our airport improvements. And one lesson learned after 9/11 and the Great Recession was that you shouldn't stop airport projects just because business turns bad, because it takes a long time to get to them all. Hopefully, you can kind of make out that chart. I'll start at the very top, what you see in purple there is our partnership with Stellar Aviation, one of our fixed base operators. Stellar is making an almost $25 million investment in that corner of the airfield in business aviation. This is an investment that any airport would love to have, and I was really excited to see it when I got here. It is also where JSX flies, and JSX is our newest airline. They don't operate through the terminal building, they operate through Stellar Aviation. That's kind of a jump-on, jump-off service to Burbank, Orange County, Oakland, and Las Vegas. 30-seat, kind of feels like a private jet, and they're operating through Stellar. Stellar has made a commitment to build a lot of hangars. We have more than 50 people waiting for hangars at this airport right now. A lot of those people moving from California have airplanes, and they would like to hangar them. We don't have any available hangars right now. So their private investment is really important for this airport, and we're excited to partner with them. In the middle of the screen there, kind of in the lime green, are the concourses, the gate areas that I'm sure you're familiar with. They were built in 1979, 1980. They've been updated, but they're aging out. They're getting a little too small for the type and size aircraft that we are seeing now. The ceilings are low, it, it's crowded in there, and we need a plan for the next generation, if you will. So we are in a, really in the first couple of months of almost two-year planning and design study for the concourses, whether we rebuild, reconstruct, or tear them down and build new. We will partner closely with the airlines and make sure that they are in support of a next generation of our gate capacity, because we will need more gates as we continue to grow here. We're also working on the kind of land side, we call it, which is the rental car operation, which is really strong in this market and has actually gotten stronger because of the pandemic. Many people not comfortable in taxis, Uber, Lyft, those kind of public transportation, not something people wanted to do during a pandemic, and the rental car business has gotten even stronger. So we're working on a plan to locate a new, improved, larger rental car facility. Also, Uber, Lyft, shared cars, electric vehicles, bicycles, motorcycles, pedestrians. Everybody needs to be able to access the terminal building equally and fairly and as conveniently as possible. And so we are working on a plan that's also next generation for how do we evolve that. And the most immediate improvement is a bump out of the ticket lobby. So where you drop your bags, where you check in, it's tight, it's congested. We saw that at spring break. The airlines are funding, funding this. It's about a $20 million project that will go into design later this summer and construction next year to just give us a little more elbow room in there, add a set of restrooms, pre-security, to help people, you know, not have to search so hard for a restroom, but just really continue improving the experience. If you're entering off Plum Drive, this is one of four locations that are being considered for a new parking garage that would serve the rental cars. Whatever we do and whatever location it is, it'll be a, a game changer at the front door of the airport. It will modernize and really provide a customer amenity that will take us hopefully a few decades into the future, whether they're electric cars or driverless cars, it doesn't matter, we still need to provide for automobiles to access the terminal building area. The new ticket lobby there, it will have higher ceilings. Just if we've learned anything during this public health crisis, it's that we need more space for people, for people to spread out, to have more queuing space. This will provide for that. And really just make it a better experience when you're trying to check in your skis and your snowboards and, and just that congestion that comes at 6:00 in the morning and people trying to get that done as quickly as they can and get to the security checkpoint. My last slide, but certainly not least, and that is the Stead Airport, which has got a really exciting future in front of it. Business has been steady. In general aviation, they have not seen the peaks and valleys caused by the pandemic. What we're working hard is on the development opportunities around this airport, as I know you're all familiar with. Really happy to report that the insert there with the yellow line is Lemon Drive, and FAA-approved Lemon Drive and Lemon Drive Utility Corridor, which was a milestone for us to get the FAA to approve that. They are our regulator. We accepted this land with a lot of grant conditions on it, and so we have to work through them. So we have that in place now. They are reviewing a easement, template easement, that we would be able to use then with every utility provider that wants to drop in utilities to cross their east to west. And along with the road itself, which they approved as an arterial road. It will be designed and permitted through the city. Also, in that chart, you can see the two blue boxes at the bottom is our Phase 1 development for non-aeronautical with Germany Properties, who is our master developer at the airport. They are about halfway through their environmental assessment for that Phase 1 development, hopefully done by the end of this year. And then we will move to an environmental assessment and FAA approval for the Moya Drive north-south utility corridor extension. So that will hopefully get going by the end of this year or early next year. In red is land that we have available right now for aeronautical development. So we all, again, need hangars at this airport. Got a list of people that would love to have an airplane up here. So we are working with the market right now with interested parties to see who's willing to develop some hangars, other commercial aviation facilities to move the Stead Airport forward into the future as well. So again, a lot going on at both of these airports. That is my last slide. Chairman Lucy, happy to take any questions. That picture is our main runway, which is under construction right now, closed for six months with a $50 million federal investment. 11,000 runway is our single most important asset, and oftentimes, they get overlooked. But in October, it will reopen, and that is the link to all of those non-stop flights we hope to have next year. Thank you.
Mr. Griffin, thank you so much for coming this morning. Wonderful presentation, looks like there's some amazing things going on at the airport. So I will open it up to questions or comments from anybody in the commission. Anybody? All right. Mr. Griffin, I think you've answered everybody's questions today and done a stellar job. Thank you very much, sir, and welcome to Reno. We really appreciate you and all that you're doing at the Airport Authority.
Thank you, Chairman Lucy, and all of you for your time, and thank you for your leadership during these extraordinary times. It's much appreciated.
Thanks, sir. All right. Mr. Manager, that takes us to our next item. This would be item four, sir. Oh, no, I'm sorry, we're pulling item fours. We pulled item four this morning, that's correct, thank you, sir. So item four is pulled, that will make, take us to item five, sir.
Item five is an appearance and presentation by Andrew Jankura, PE, Project Manager of the Regional Transportation Commission for Washoe, to provide an update regarding the RTC's Washoe Traffic Signal Timing Program.
All right, welcome, Mr. Jankura, we appreciate it, nice to see you this morning.
Oh, thank you, everyone. I think the PowerPoint slides should be on there, did you guys get that? It's just that, huh? I don't know if it's possible, you guys can put the slides on?
No, it doesn't, I'm, I'm getting a nod from the, from the back, that's the best we can do today, sorry, buddy.
Okay, no worries. Okay, well, thank you, everyone. My name is Andrew Jankura, Project Manager for the Traffic Signal Timing for the Trucking Meadows. So what we're going to cover today is a little bit of the program history, about what we've been doing in the Trucking Meadows for the Signal Timing Program. And then go over the Traffic Signal Program, why we do traffic signal, traffic signal synchronization, the signal timing process, some of the major achievements that we got with our program, impacts from synchronization, some of the time costs and carbon dioxide reductions that we achieve, public and agency feedback from our program. So in the Trucking Meadows, we have about 410 traffic signals in the region. And federal guidelines state that traffic signals should be re-timed on a three-to-five-year basis. And in our region, we're doing them on a three-year cycle. So the Signal Timing Program started back in 2005. And for the first three phases of signal timing, we haven't had really good success working with consultants. So we employed the University of Nevada in 2014, and the program has been much success since then. And why the program has been successful? Well, we have a lower cost to time the program, uh, signal timing per capita. The students benefit from learning and doing the re-timing in our region. Staff and these students are local, so any issues or any complaints that may come up, we can respond immediately to the traffic signal issue. Students and the staff continue to grow and learn from the program and continue to develop more innovative ideas to time our traffic signals in a more effective and efficient way. So why do we do traffic signal, single synchronization? Well, fuel costs. So fuel consumption is reduced by fewer vehicles idling, decelerating, or accelerating. Air pollution is reduced from lower fuel consumption. Emissions, pollutions, and, you know, carbon dioxide are reduced. And only that's safety. Safety is also increased because less drivers, or drivers can get to their destinations from point A to point B a lot more efficiently and faster, which takes their frustration out and are less likely to take risks, which increase traffic safety. So how does traffic signal timing develop? Well, the amount of timing is given to each movement dependent on the demand of traffic. Then, the sum of that timing gives us a cycle in the signal, and then we use that same signal for all the intersections down corridor. And then with that, we create a green wave, so we line up all the greens. So you can see here on the top slide, you can see this is Sparks Boulevard in the midday plan. Before optimizations on the left side, and then after optimizations on the right side. You can see you have much more bandwidth going in both north and the south direction. And then on the bottom slide, I wish that I can show you guys the video, but this is a video that I had of Pyramid and Disk Drive. And what I was trying to show you here is the progression between Disk Drive and Los Altos Parkway along Pyramid Highway. And this is during the noon time. And from the video, you would be able to see that traffic leaving for northbound, going north from Disk Drive to get to Los Altos would hit the green, and it would go through without stopping. And the same thing in the southbound direction, you would have the same effect. Leaving Los Altos, they would get the green at Disk and continue going without stopping. So some of the major achievements that we've seen, we've done in our program in the last couple of years is we were able to update our walk and flash it don't walk times to meet federal standards. So that is about three and a half feet per second. So there's an increase of pedestrian crossing time at all signals to accommodate all the ADA and anyone with disabilities to cross the intersections. And then we were able to update our vehicle crossing times, which is the yellow and the all-red timing to federal guidelines as well. Approximately 250 traffic signals have been re-timed and synchronized in the region. And if you can see that picture, that's downtown Reno right there. And that picture is taken from 8th Street and looking all the way down to the arch, and you can see it's all green. And then on the other slide, this is South Meadows Parkway re-timing. And in this video, you would see the car leaving the, the southbound off-ramp off of 580 to make a left to go east of South Meadows Parkway. So this is during the PM peak, and with the new updated signal timing, it would take you 70 seconds to get past Double R Boulevard. In the previous timing, it would take you over four minutes. So that's a major difference right there. So some of the impacts from our traffic signal synchronization is we've had an increase in delay in minor streets. With the increase of traffic around town, we had to have the green more on the main line to get more traffic through. green more on the main line to get more traffic through, that way, it kind of penalizes the side streets, so, but at the cost of penalizing the main street, it's more detrimental to do that than, you know, to get more green on the main line. Delay is caused by pedestrian timing, the delay from the pit timing is longer, so people would have to wait longer to get the green going. And then moving forward in the future, when you re-time a traffic signal corridor, at first you get about a 30% increase or improvement, but further on, you can get about 1, 2, or up to 5% increase in order improvement in our timing. That's because you've done so much already, but you can do a little more to get better in the future. Single timing must be maintained going forward as well, it decreates overtime, so this is why we're doing them on a three-year cycle, and this is to accommodate any changes in traffic demand or any changes in traffic pattern, and this is why we have to make sure to re-accommodate them, and this is apparent because we have a lot of people moving from California or other places in the nation, and we have to make sure that we are accommodating the changes in traffic demand. So some examples, some emissions and cost savings that we were achieved, I have two case studies to show you, which is on Vista Boulevard and Rock Boulevard. So on the Vista Boulevard during the AM and the PM plan, we were able to save about $1.8 million per year in fuel and emission savings, and then in Rock Boulevard in the AM and the PM plan, we were able to save up to $900,000 per year in fuel savings. And how are we doing compared to other metropolitans? So we have Orange County to compare with. Orange County spends about $5 million per year on the Single Timing Program, we are spending only $333,000 on our Single Timing Program, which is two and a half times less per capita than we're spending on our program. And you can see, Orange County is getting roughly about 1.7 greens per red, so when you're driving down a corridor, you're going to get a red light every 1.7 signals. We are getting about 4.3 greens per signal before you get a red. So some of the public and agency feedback that we've gotten is we've got less complaints on our Traffic Signal Hotline over the years as we continue to improve the signal timing, we got positive feedback and collaboration from the local agencies, and only that, we got public feedback, positive feedback from social media. If you can see that meme right there, it was actually posted on the Reno Cars and Coffee page on Facebook, which generated over 1,000 shares and 500 likes, and they were talking about the green lights on North McCarrick Boulevard, which we recently re-timed back in December. So going from Clearacre all the way up to Pyramid on the evening time, you're most likely to get greens going all the way through and vice versa in the other direction. With that, UNR has been an integral part of the program's success, so I have here Dr., Professor Dr. Tian, who would like to share a little bit about the program that we've been doing.
Thank you, Andrew. Yeah, I'm Zhong Tian, I'm a professor at UNR. I started at UNR 2004, building the transportation program from scratch, and, you know, without a close collaboration and a strong support from RTC, we won't be here like we are here now today. Well, Signal Timing is a very special skill, in fact, it's not just simply green, yellow, and red, it generally takes several years to develop that skill. You know, having been involved with major transportation organizations nationwide and also in the world, I can probably say that there's nowhere else that can produce students like UNR, and the students are ready right after graduation, they can take on any job. And I usually say, you know, our students, right after school, I place them on the top 5% among all the traffic signal engineers, like Andrew, wonderful graduate, you know, very rare find excellent engineer in this field. Yeah, unfortunately, there's a video clip that you couldn't see, so that the next one is Logan Williams, he graduated in December, and he now he's working at Cedar Parks in Texas, and that position usually requires a minimum three years professional experience and a P.E. license, but they hired him, now he's in charge of the city's signal system. So they hired him because of his special skills and knowledge, and we made a video, and maybe later, when you have a chance, you can hear what he was saying, basically, the UNR and the opportunity really make this happen. Thank you very much, and we're glad to be here.
So we have a signal hotline, so if any of you board members have any issues or traffic complaints, please feel free to reach out to me or the hotline, and we'll try to get back to any issues or concerns that you may have as soon as possible. So with that, that is our presentation, I'm open to take any questions, and thank you, Chairman Lucy, for giving me the opportunity to give you guys some insight on the program.
Andrew, thank you so much for coming today, we really do appreciate you coming out and sharing all the information with us. Are there any questions from the commission? Vice Chairman.
Just a, just a comment, I'll let you know. I'll let you know if I hit four greens.
Okay, sounds good.
Because I can tell you coming into work this morning, I didn't hit four greens.
You didn't hit four greens, okay.
No, no.
Which way are you coming from work?
Spanish Springs.
Spanish Springs on Pyramid?
Yes.
Okay, that is slated to be re-timed pretty soon, too. It's been about three years, and, you know, with all that growth, it's kind of making a hard impact on that signal system.
Okay.
Yeah. So, don't worry, Chairman Houghton.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Andrew this morning? Mr. Kura, thank you so much for coming today, we do appreciate all your work at RTC and everything you do. All right, seeing no further in regards to that, we will on to item six, Mr. Manager.
Item six is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Perfect. Madam Clerk, will you please call a public comment?
Yes, we have quite a few, so I will call two at a time, the second person, please queue up and be ready, Valerie White, followed by Tracy Thomas.
Welcome, Ms. White.
I have a video. I'm speaking to you today, asking that you open this county up, not partially, completely. No more masks, no more social distancing, no more partial occupancies. You need to own what you are allowing to happen, right now, today, when you give your authority and power to unelected political tyrants. I'm going to tell you what your decisions are doing to Washoe County children. I can't show you actual photos of what you're enabling, since I don't have access to police or court files, but as a former career teacher and mandated reporter, let me describe a few of the things I know about. Envision multiple deep cigarette burns on children's bodies. Envision huge bruises up and down eight-year-olds' arms and legs. Envision nine-year-old boys having accidents in their pants while at school because they can't control it after being sexually abused. Think about the kids who are being locked in closets and going without food and water for hours. Think about the children who can't concentrate and participate in their own education because the experiences of the night before were so traumatic. The number of child abuse reports have dropped during your COVID lockdown and mandates, but it's not because the amount of abuse has dropped, it's increased. But children aren't in school, so mandated reporters can't see it to report it. WCSD, the governor, and the rest of the state and county bureaucrats, who place political agendas above caring about people, and your collusion with them, are allowing sexual, emotional, and psychological abuse to continue on the most truly vulnerable, our children. Children are at the bottom of the totem pole. They catch all the consequences of problems that occur above them and problems they didn't create. They catch the anger and abuse from relapsed alcoholic addicted parents and caretakers. They catch the results of depressed and mentally ill parents and grandparents who are at the end of their rope after losing jobs and homes. They catch the psychological scar that results from being told the air will kill them, so cover your faces forever. Children catch all of the horrible results of governments' horrible decisions, like this commission's decision. Do your job, stop this COVID protocol madness, open up this county completely.
Tracy Thomas, followed by Roger Edwards.
Good morning. Scripture provides in James 4:17, "Therefore, to one who knows the right thing to do and does not do it, to him it is sin." And Proverbs 3:27, "Do not withhold good from those to whom it is due, when it is in your power to do it." I have emailed and come before this board in several attempts to bring attention to current flaws and opportunities of improvement within Washoe County's election processes. To be perfectly clear, it is not an effort to change the past, after all, Clark County's the only one that matters, right? But rather to arm you for the future, that you are blind to this fact is only evidence of the enemy's hold on you. John 8:44, "He is the father of the lie and illusion," something that is deceiving by producing a false or misleading impression of reality. The enemy may be invisible, but he is not fictional. The purposeful choice to not act after being repeatedly alerted on public record will leave this board legally and financially liable, or any attempt to claim ignorance will be undermined. The evidence is abundant regarding the vulnerabilities of your vendors' voting equipment since 2006 and continues today. Vendors are in it for the money, not integrity. This vendor has stated on record that they have skimmed on security for convenience. The more you disregard this negligence, the more damage they are free to do. You may laugh at me, but they laughed at NOAA, too. Are you truly naive enough to believe Washoe County is the exception? Are you certain you want to maintain the posture of only doing what you are told to do? Are you waiting for a federal court to ban these machines like the AccuVote ones do or? As scripture tells us in Ephesians 5:13, "All things become visible when they are exposed by the light." Currently, the registrar is not in elected position, you have a unique privilege in guiding how our elections are run. At the very minimum, use of this vendor should be placed on a temporary pause for 2022 until all the litigation is finished. Nevada legislature is likely to mandate mail ballots issued to all voters. Washoe County could focus efforts and resources on paper ballots only for 2022. The 2020 primary demonstrates the office is equipped to handle this. This would help reduce the 80% of ballots that will end up in trashcans and our landfills, since only 20% of Washoe County voters typically use paper ballots. And last but not least, Ephesians 4:29, "Let no unwholesome words come out of your mouth, only that which is good for edification and gives grace." Commissioner Herman is owed a public apology for the disrespectful and misguided rebuke at your last meeting. Every commissioner on this board has made pleas in the same manner she did for their own request for agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Roger Edwards, followed by Kathy Kite.
Welcome, Mr. Edwards.
Oh, good morning, my commission. Always fun to come and see you guys. You know, I really hate to be the broken record, but I'm just one of many in this audience, need to unmask, come on, study after study, they don't work, they don't do anything but manipulate the populace. Come on, take a stand, folks, we're behind you, you know we are. Shifting gears a little bit, we need to talk about the water recharge in Golden Valley. You know, I was one of the original guys to help set up the Special Assessment District up there, you know, we never expected it to work as well as it has, now we've flooded lower property owners' wells, we've had it shut down now for four years, and the neighbors are getting cranky, so taking our $22 a month charge, and they all know that it's shut off. So we need to suspend the monthly charge, keep the program working, there's half a million dollars in there, we can keep our inspections and our well maintenance and our fees for the non-interruptible water supplies and all that stuff, plenty of money in there. Let's just shut off the monthly charge for a couple of years and see how the water table's working. Down at the Gun Streets, the water is down, it has dropped some, but it's only still like 10 feet from the surface of the ground. We have filled up the valley, they know that, it's dropping slowly, but we can't keep charging the folks, they're just making everybody in the valley cranky, they're going to demand that we shut the whole system down, and that's going to undo all the work we've done. So please get with your folks, we've asked them every time we have a meeting with them, and they say, well, there's a bunch of stuff going on, and, you know, we've got this all set up, we can't just shut it off. Yes, we can, just shut it off. We can suspend it, we don't need to cancel it, we just need to suspend it for a couple of years, we can put it back in if it gets down to where we're recharging. That's all I've got, please undo the mask requirement, it's not working.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Kathy Kite, followed by Diane Craig.
Welcome, Ms. Kite.
Thank you. I actually wanted to address a couple of things, and the first issue is really the mask issue and the effects that it has on our children, and also the people in general and just the environment, and first the children, and I just want to tell a story of a first grade teacher that told me, this is a true story last week, where first she told me that all year long, the kids have been crying, and they're listless, and they're upset, and this has never happened in first grade, and she said, finally she heard the kids talking just last week, and they were having a little break, and she heard them say, you know, how long have we been in first gr- how many years have we been in first grade? That's unheard of, that a first grader would think they had been in first grade for years. Can you guys see the effect that it's having on these children, where time is dragging, where it is working on their nerves and their stress? And shame on you, Bob Lucy, because I heard that you made the comment that you have a seven-year-old and you send them off to school wearing this mask, that is so sad that I don't know what is controlling you, I don't know what is happening, that you would, and anyone here that has any children, would enslave them. And now I want to talk about the environment that's happening, the environment, the plants need what we breathe out, that's just basic science from the beginning of creation, and now they're not getting what we breathe out, and we're breathing in what we shouldn't be breathing in, and we can't breathe in with that, and then not only the environment, the effects of what you're doing with the sanitation, polluting the environment with all that spraying of chemicals, and that's the effect it has on people, not to mention the dental issues that the dentists have been reporting due to these masks. And then last issue I just want to talk about is, is I want to talk about freedom and what our forefathers came here for, and what they set up, this government, the way they did was based on the rule of law found in the Bible, which is the only thing that offers freedom from tyranny, because before the Reformation, everybody had no freedom, everything they owned, everything they were was owned, was belonged to a king, who could come in and do whatever they wanted, and then came the Reformation and the spread of freedom found in the Bible and the gospel over to America, and then the opportunity to be, and then there was that, we had an opportunity of freedom, but now you have put us under control by wearing masks, and you can't even buy things without wearing this mask. What is controlling you guys? Is it the ESG score? Is it money? My question is, what is the hidden agenda? What do you, why, what are you doing to defy God and create fear in your own children? And then you keep this deception going that is threatening all the country and what it used to stand for? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kite.
Diane Craig, followed by Janet Butcher.
Welcome, Ms. Craig.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm not sure what I'm going to talk about. I'm not sure what I'm going to talk about today, a little bit of everything. Hope I make sense. The first thing is, I do want to talk about the masks. I know I've talked about it the last few times I've been up here. The one thing I am learning, the true meaning of having the courage of my convictions. And I'm a strong believer in that, and I think I'm a pretty strong woman, but I'm finding myself tested. Because unlike some of the people in here who are very courageous not to wear their masks everywhere they go, I have found it a little difficult to be that person, but I'm working on it. And every time I walk into a place of business, I try not to put my mask on. If it's a small business, I will, but the larger ones, I take it off, and I always have a pit. I mean, I always have a knot in my stomach doing it, and I have to talk myself down and say, "I'm doing nothing wrong. I am doing nothing wrong. Nobody should be wearing these masks, none of us." It's crazy. But along those lines of having the power, courage of my convictions, I want to know why you're not having the courage of your convictions. Because I've read some of the things you've said and have listened to some of the things you've said, and I truly believe that many of you in your heart of hearts believes what is going on is wrong, and you're only abiding by it because you're scared of consequences of our governor, of things that we don't know about. But I'm asking you, each of you, stand up. Stand up to Sicilac. We've got eight counties open, not because their county commissioners said, "Oh, we're going to do it." No, because they said, "We're going to open in spite of Sicilac." And I'm asking you all to do the same. Have the courage of your convictions. Quit being scared of what's holding you back. There is something holding all of you back from doing this, and I don't understand. If I can have the courage of my convictions, why can't all of you? You know, we have something else going on, too, this permanent place to have testing and vaccines for $800,000. Why? Everywhere I go, Safeway, the drugstores, you can get your vaccine, you can get tested. We need to spend $800,000 to make a permanent structure? This is crazy. I don't get it, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Craig.
Janet Butcher, followed by Jeannie Cantana.
Welcome, Ms. Butcher.
There go the earrings. My neighbor has problem with her hearing aids coming out all the time. I have a tale of two counties. One is in a state that is 46th in unemployment, while the other is 6th. Both are similar in population. According to the 2019 census estimates, Polk County, Iowa, which had an estimated 490,000 population, and Washoe County, which has 471,000. The comparison between how these two counties are addressing this perpetual health issue are not similar. As you will see in the following photos, people are given a choice of wearing a mask. Children are playing sports without a mask, while their parents and grandparents look on smiling and enjoying their freedoms like we all should be. The first photo I am sharing, the smiling faces, aren't they wonderful? The first one is the opening of a skate park just opened May 7. I think there's one person in there wearing a mask. He chose to wear a mask. Bless him. The rest of them chose not to. Here are three young men, young boys, on the sports field playing baseball, enjoying Here's a mother and a grandmother enjoying the game, smiling. You can see their smiles. Here's a grouping of smiling faces. 417 days is enough. It's past time for Washoe County to lift the health emergency. It's past time for us to give freedom and fun back to our children. Let them enjoy sports, each other, and life. Tyranny under the guise of safety is still tyranny. God bless our children and the freedom they should be enjoying.
Thank you, Ms. Butcher.
Jeannie Cantana, followed by Rita Pepe.
Good morning. I just wanted to ask you or tell you to get on the right path. We just saw a very positive presentation by Mr. Griffin about our airport and all the great things coming, projected growth. We are in a unique position because we are like a destination city. People want to come here for all the things we have to offer, the lake, the mountains, everything. And I think we're kind of behind the curve. You guys could be in the forefront and go in the positive direction like he's projecting, and no masks, give people the choice, but go into the future in freedom and growth and positivity and happiness. But for some reason, you're not choosing that. We need to go ahead and move into a positive direction, and especially for kids, like she just showed playing sports. But I really think you should think about what you want to do as our city grows. We need to, the pandemic is over. There's no science saying that it's still here, so please, please go in the right direction. The other thing is the election machines. I think there should be a pause in using the ones we had because right now there's so many investigations going on, so many audits, and we should just pause that until we can get to the next election and possibly use paper ballots or get new machines altogether. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Cantana.
Rita Pepe, followed by Deanna Lane.
Welcome, Ms. Pepe.
Good morning. Last week at the special meeting, the county commissioners, the entire board-- Oh, move this down. The entire board voted four to one in favor of approving the Washoe County roadmap to recovery mitigation measures. But then we were also told that you have no control to lift the public health emergency. I'm confused as to why you were even voting on it. And I'm also concerned about the election integrity, and I feel that we need to require voter ID, clean up the voter rolls, and absentee ballots should be sent only to those who cannot get to the voting polls. And I just like, and I agree with everyone that spoke before me, especially in regards to children. It's just not right. And I just plead to your conscience in doing what is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pepe.
Deanna Lane, followed by Kim Mack.
Good morning. My name is Deanna Lane, not Deanna Lane. There are two Es. My name is Deanna Lane, not Deanna Lane. There are two Es in my name. I just want to read something. This is out of the Bible, John 18, or Matthew 18, I'm sorry. "At that time the disciples came to Jesus, saying, 'Who then is the greatest in the kingdom of heaven?'" Then Jesus called a little child to set him in the midst of them and said, "Assuredly I say to you, unless you are converted and become as little children, you will by no means enter the kingdom of heaven. Therefore whoever humbles himself as this little child is the greatest in the kingdom of heaven. Whoever receives one little child like this in my name receives me. But whoever causes one of these little ones who believe in me to sin, it would be better for him if a millstone were hung around his neck and he were drowned in the depth of the sea. Woe to the world because of the offenses; for offenses must come, but woe to the man by whom the offense comes. If your hand or foot causes you to sin, cut it off and cast it from you. It is better for you to enter into life lame or maimed, rather than having two hands or two feet to be cast into the everlasting fire. And if your hand causes you to sin, pluck it out and cast it from you. It is better for you to enter into life with one eye, rather than having two eyes to be cast into hellfire.'" I'm just asking that you please lift this emergency edict for the masks and reopen fully the county. And please do it for the children. The children are the ones who are the next generation, who are suffering. They're the, they're the ones that are suffering, and we, we don't want to see that. We want to see the next generation happy, healthy, strong individuals, God-fearing individuals. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lane.
Kim Mack, followed by Katie Burke.
Welcome, Ms. Mack.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. I only have the one picture on my phone. If you can see it, it's baby's mask. So Reno native, back again. I spoke to you in April. I mentioned that my son, who comes home from school, has a mask that's soaked just through and through when I grab it when he gets off the bus. And so I want to talk a little bit more about him. What I didn't mention last time is that he's four, and he's special needs. And Washoe County School District redid their program because last year he went for four days a week for three and a half hours. I didn't have a choice this time. They wanted to send him two full days a week. And, you know, being after lockdown and having them not have that social exposure that they need to develop, I thought I had to make a concession, which is really crappy, in my opinion, that I have to choose, okay, send my kid, who's young, all day with a mask, and he's special needs, or withhold him from school so he doesn't get as much social interaction as he would normally. And to me, it's cruel. Like, I don't think any kid should wear a mask, but special needs kids that have neurodevelopmental delays, depriving that child of oxygen, in my opinion, is abuse, just like that picture on my phone. Those little babies should not have masks on. Their brains are developed. They need oxygen. That is abuse. That should stop. You guys have the power to open up Washoe County. You can do it. I don't know what's stopping you, like they've said before. I really empathize with your job. You guys have a hard job, and it must suck to sit there and have people come up and rail you. I'm not trying to rail you. I really, I understand it's hard. You make hard decisions every day, so I appreciate that about you. But there's so many things screaming that these are not good for us. And the masks are just a precursor to the vaccines, which lots of people are dying. And if you haven't noticed online, things are being censored. Doctors and nurses are speaking out. Those posts are getting taken down. That should terrify the living daylights out of every one of us, that that information about horrible vaccine reactions is being taken down. Wake up. This is not good for us. This is not good for our society, our future, our children. This is communism coming in here, even walking in through those metal detectors. I had to walk in twice. I need to use the restroom, and they said I need to go through it again to come in here and speak. Okay, fine, I'll do it. But we said the Pledge of Allegiance, and today it was the first time it was ironic to me at the end, with liberty and justice for all. Sure doesn't feel like it anymore. Land of the free, home of the slaves, is what we're turning into.
Thank you, Ms. Mack.
Katie Burke, followed by Cindy Martinez.
Thank you. Great job, Kathleen. In lieu of Mother's Day on Sunday, I believe in Mother Nature's design. Everything has a purpose. Everything contributes, even viruses. In fact, we would not be a species without the use of a virus as an evolutionary tool. With our own human biology now being seen as the new frontier to colonize and control, I ask you all, is this the direction we really want to go? Does even the most intelligent of our species even understand the complexity of the working whole? Yes, we now can edit and alter our genes that we deem as scary, bad, or unfair. But do we really understand how such changes will affect the balance of the system? I think not. You see, Nature's goal is balance. There is nothing bad or good in her view, just balance. However, time and time again, we have altered her design only to be met with the brutal consequences of an unbalanced world. The chemicals we leach into our earth have decimated our soil, air, and water, and because we have lost our connection with her and each other, we have created a state of dis-ease within our own bodies because we are simply a reflection of the soil herself. The virus was her call to change, yet we refuse to hear it. Rather, we choose to fight her in fear. But the truth is, we are a sick nation with 54% of our children living with a chronic illness of some sort. This virus is only highlighting this fact. She is saying, "Fix yourself by fixing me." Instead of considering her call, we are going into our biological structures, this unbelievable evolutionary masterpiece, and altering her design to do something it was never meant to do. We are hiding from Mother Nature like she did not birth us. The division and hatred being produced over which direction to go is truly unfortunate. Today, if you do not believe that altering our design in this intimate way is a good thing, you are shunned and told that you are selfish. But I'm not being selfish. I am looking at the long game, the one that holds our great-great-grandchildren. Here we sit about talking, we talk about masking our children and vaccine passports, a never-ending schedule of drugs. What are we doing? What world are we creating? For the record, I am not consenting to the control of men over my body. I am a child of this planet. This is my air to breathe. My body is not a territory to conquer or control. This body is my land, and it is my right to say no. And so I say it proudly, no, no, no. Thank you very much. And for the record, I have seen 14 mask touches up here, which negates the use of the mask. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Cindy Martinez, followed by Donald Fossom.
Welcome, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Chair Lucy. Good morning, commissioners, Mr. Manager, Mr. District Attorney, Madam County Clerk, staff. May I have the overhead, please? Just real quickly regarding election security from Telegram this morning, a post, "So a pipeline is hackable, but a voting machine is not." Despite this commission's May 3, four to one vote to approve the local COVID-19 plan, I will continue to demand this elected body declare an end to the public health emergency. According to the county's current status, there are only 33 confirmed and suspected hospitalizations, six in ICU, two on ventilators. and suspected hospitalizations, six in ICU, two on ventilators. Let's be clear, the emergency declaration under NRS 414 must be continued in order for counties, especially Washoe, to gorge on the CARES Act money. How else was Dave Solero, an unelected bureaucrat, able to solicit a quote sealed bid from one company, Sierra Nevada Construction Incorporated, to perform a public works project for $888,700, ostensibly to relocate the Washoe County testing and vaccine pod to a longer-term location? It's to keep the money rolling in. According to Mr. Solero's own staff report, quote, "The lot is a dirt lot that the RSCVA already had construction drawings for a future storage lot. And the incident commander, Mr. Solero, determined that this relocation of the pod would be the least expensive option and still be able to provide the required vaccination rate," there's that pesky vaccination rate again, "to be successful. Construction began on April 5 and will be complete on May 17. And the fiscal impact, also known as follow-the-money. The cost associated with this bid has been accounted for within Internal Coronavirus Relief Fund Account Number 11733, which is being utilized for the regional vaccination response amongst the four entities. This is a blatant money grift. This is a fleecing of American and Nevada taxpayers. This is an apparent organized criminal racketeering enterprise. All who participate in the discussion and allocation of these funds are apparent co-conspirators. This county commission is the most corrupt I have had the misfortune to observe in the almost 27 years I have lived here. Who owns you and your votes? What have you received in return for those votes? What threats do they hold over your heads for your votes? The gravy train will eventually run out of track. History will not remember Commissioners Hartung, Hill, Jung, and Lucy Kindly. Your role in the bankrupting of America and subjugation of Washoe County and Nevada citizens will not be forgotten. We will be sure of it."
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Donald Fossum, followed by Kalen Sutton.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Fossum.
Good morning. Have the overhead, please. Thank you. I invite all of you to look at this box and what's your first thought on what it means to you? What's your spontaneous action you would like to take with it? Or what's your first intelligent thought on it? Because I would love to have bought you breakfast. But I would love to have bought you Aunt Jemima, too. But guess what happened? Well, our voices were being silenced by masks, social distancing mandates, and other things. She was removed from our ingredients and her comfortable character was removed. You could look at her and say, wow, this is going to be good. But while we were being separated, quieted, locked down, masked, silenced, she was gone and other things were put into the ingredients through intimidation and extremism. And this country has become no longer how the election goes. It's how those who have us locked down, controlling us in masks, keep us silenced. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fossum.
Kalen Sutton, followed by Melanie Sutton.
Do you even know how masks work? Because the germs from your hands go onto the mask and then the mask goes on to your face. And germs are on doorknobs, like, almost everything. So, because elevators, doorknobs, everything, almost. And do you have kids? Because if you do and you send them to school, and they have any medical conditions? I don't know. When your kid, like if you have any kids and they go to school, they could, I don't know. They could not pay attention in class because of the masks. And my cousin goes to school, my cousin's goes to school. And they say you have to eat lunch in your classroom, not with your friends or anything. And I'm pretty sure she said something about you have to wear masks during recess. So and how could you help anyone if you can't see their face? Because if they're sad, how could you help them if you can't see them? So, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton.
Melanie Sutton, followed by Catherine Snedeker.
Welcome.
Thank you. As always, I don't prepare what I'm going to talk about. And normally, it changes after sitting and listening to everybody. I've been trying to calm down for the last hour and a half that you guys think that you guys can change the rules all of a sudden. What's the difference from last week than from this week? You all say you're doing your jobs. You say you're doing your job. Everybody in the lobby says they're doing their job. Isn't that what the Nazis said when they're killing the Jews? Isn't it? I don't know if this is working. But, I mean, seriously. I was, so every morning, I, yes, I'm a smoker and I drink my cup of coffee. I sit outside. I go through all my notifications. Well, this morning, my notification on Facebook was coaching my daughter in softball, four years ago. That's what I used to do before all this. She can't play softball because I will refuse to allow her to wear a mask. It is not healthy for her. And it's not healthy for all of you, whoever has children. It's not healthy for them. And I'm disgusted if you guys send your children to school with masks. And are you wearing a paper mask? Because do you realize, we just did a, we did an experiment. There's parasites. Yes.
Trust the Commissioner.
I am. I'm just letting you know there's parasites in those paper masks that we're injecting, putting in our children. Like, what, like what are you guys doing? What are you doing? You know dang well that the masks do absolutely nothing. We come here every single week and we are going to continue to come here every single week. The masks do absolutely nothing, nothing. Does nothing. Like, what are you guys doing? Yes. But we, I think it was Kim that spoke about it, or Katie. But like, we're going to keep coming and we're going to keep bringing our friends. The masks are doing nothing. I mean, I was, I was my daughter's softball coach. I was my, I was the team mom coordinator. I was the recruitment chair. That's what I was doing two years ago. My daughter's missed three seasons now. Because I will not force my daughter to not be able to breathe oxygen. She's, my body, my choice, right? Is that what you guys say? My body, my choice? Right? So my body, my choice. I get to choose to wear a mask or not. I get to choose to take the shot or not, right? Is that what we've been taught? And then we've also been taught the last, what, 10 years? Global warming, right? So what we're breathing are filth? Like, this does not make sense. You guys need to freaking follow the science because you're not doing that.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton.
Catherine Snedeker, followed by Kenji Otto. And I distributed a handout earlier from Ms. Snedeker.
Welcome, Ms. Snedeker.
Thank you. My name is Catherine Snedeker, a non-person, non-resident, unenfranchised, natural woman. Do you people know how to read? Have you people actually talked to doctors in the field about this fake COVID thing? I look on my cellphone for the weather, or, yeah, for the weather, and there's always a COVID thing there for Washoe County. Yesterday, it was 498 cases and eight deaths. Today, there's 800 cases and eight deaths. You know what? There isn't one case. Not one. This has been a fraud from the beginning. Your authority is being challenged right now because I don't believe you have the authority. You do not have the constitutional or statutory authority to tell me to wear a mask. You're not my husband. You're not my doctor. You're not my parents. You don't get to tell me how to take care of my health. I've been doing it fine for a very long, long time without any government assistance. So damn it, you're going to show me why I'm a risk. And in case you didn't know, when you cut off a kid's oxygen, it weakens their immune system. Good luck with that because you're all responsible for causing harm. Your job is the health, safety, and welfare of the public at large. It's not dictating some executive order by some weird governor who thinks he's God and then a county commissioner chair who thinks he's God, too. They don't get to tell, you don't get to tell me what to do. You don't get to tell anybody in this room what to do without one shred of evidence proving that the virus exists. You haven't provided one shred. I didn't walk over 25 people falling dead in the parking lot as I was coming in here. It's so contagious, you have to wear a mask. Where are the biohazard waste buckets for the mask? Why are they drifting in the parking lots? If we're so contagious and breathing that stuff on the mask, where's the biohazard waste bucket? All over, in every store, two or three of them, in every parking lot. Where are they? Oh, that's right, this is all fake, phony, and fraud. You're going to answer. And if you don't answer, you're going to pay the consequences. I guarantee it.
Thank you.
Do your job. Protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public. And you're not a-
Thank you, Ms. Snedeker.
Kenji Otto.
Thank you.
Kenji Otto, followed by Nicole Harris.
Welcome, Mr. Otto.
Oh, thank you. So America was established on, the idea was to have freedom. And unfortunately, during the last year or so, that freedom has been gradually being taken away. And I'm, like many others here, are not going to go away. A year ago, I had a, was diagnosed with a mini-stroke and I had to resign from politics. And so, in essence, now that it's a year later and my doctors say I'm well, I'm back and I'm, and I'm not going away. I intend to be, I don't intend to be a politician, but I do intend to be a citizen that's, that is definitely involved. The country, again, was founded on freedom. These things are not freedom. And I realize that you can't remove or get rid of the mask mandate. Only the, only that person in Carson, who I won't name because he doesn't need, deserve to be there, is the one. So I will give you that. You don't have the authority to remove these masks. Only he does. So we need to remove him and there's been several attempts. Now, who, the people, now I appreciate the fact that you have open meetings as best you can. But the people that aren't, like the school trustees, aren't. And I will be attending the next trustee meeting that's open and letting them know that I'm working on recalling their, all of them. Well, not all of them, most of them. At least in my district, I will be working hard on it. And I will encourage all the rest of the districts to work hard to recall their trustees. Mr. Lucy, I know you're the vice chair of, chair on the District Board of Health and I ask again, here you can't do anything, but on the board you can, is to remove Kevin Dick. He doesn't belong there. He, there's no reason why he should have spoke up against anybody. The board, I can see if you, if the board did it, but not him. So please remove him. And I'll be at that meeting to tell them that as well. So I do appreciate the security, the change. But can we make it so that we don't have to come back through it to use the restroom? And the other thing, last thing is, please look up on Google, "human breath out, breathe out carbon dioxide." There's some very good information there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Otto.
Nicole Harris.
Nicole Harris.
Yes, Nicole's not here.
All right.
So while we get ready for the Zoom speaker, I do have emails from Carol Feinberg and Laurel Allen to be placed on the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
On Zoom, we have Chase Janvren.
Mr. Janvren.
Good morning, Chairman Lucy and County Commissioners. I'm Chase Janvren, Program Manager for the Tahoe Prosperity Center. I'd like to address a particular budget component on Agenda Item Number Nine, $30,000 to help fund the Washoe-Tahoe Housing Partnership. As a little background, the Tahoe Prosperity Center is the economic and community development agency based in Incline Village that serves the entire Lake Tahoe Basin. We convened a similar housing Tahoe partnership on the South Shore last year because we believe that if you work in Tahoe, you should be able to live in Tahoe. Local jurisdictions, businesses, foundations, and over 100 residents helped us identify strategies to add more local housing options as part of this effort. This partnership culminated with the South Shore Region Local Resident Housing Action Plan, which was published in March of 2020. And since convening this group of partners, including Douglas County, the City of South Lake Tahoe, the TRPA, and many others, have made substantial progress in applying the strategies identified in the action plan. Over the past 20 years, there have been numerous studies articulating some of the housing challenges that we face in the basin, but little action has been done with those studies. That's how the strategies are a differentiator. I don't believe that the progress that's been made over the last 15 months on the South Shore would have been possible without identifying these specific strategies and collectively agreeing to address them, namely, knowing exactly what the problems are, which agency has the authority to change them, or working together to, in order to reach those goals. Now, the newly-formed Washoe-Tahoe Housing Partnership will be conducting a very similar needs assessment and strategic plan for the local resident housing in the Incline Village and Crystal Bay areas of Lake Tahoe. Along with the previous work that the Mountain Housing Council on the North Shore has done around housing, this is the last part of the Tahoe Basin to have this type of housing analysis completed and will provide important guidance on how the area fits into the greater Lake Tahoe region. And keep in mind that there's no single silver bullet to solve the housing crisis. If there were, it would already have been done. So this will offer numerous options that can be employed. And thanks to the local community and the private funding that will be making up the majority of the funds to support this project, the Tahoe Prosperity Center is proud to once again serve as a convenor for this important issue. We, of course, strongly support this partnership and would like to encourage the Commissioners to support these efforts as well. Thank you for your time today and keep up the great work.
Thank you, Mr. Janvren.
Mr. Chairman, I have nobody else signed in.
See, no further public comment. We will close public comment, bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, we are on to Item 7. This is Commissioners and County Managers' announcements.
Item 7 is Commissioners, County Managers' Announcements, Reports, and Updates to Include Boards and Comments, I'm sorry, Boards and Commissions' Updates, Requests for Information, or Topics for Future Agendas.
All right. Mr. Manager, do you have anything this morning that you would like to share at this time?
Only that I believe Commissioner Hill suggested we pull out 8C4 from the consent agenda.
I have it on my, I have it on- I have it on my, I have it on there to view.
Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Herman, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My first item is the same as I've done just about every meeting, and that suggests that we, or requests that we do a resolution, and that would take us out of the face mask fiasco. All right, so... Last week, I believe, or, you know, I've noticed that there's certain numbers that are on, on the website for people to call, and there's, I never called it, and that's the 328-2005. So, I called it on Friday, couldn't get an answer, the messaging was full. Called it Saturday. Called it Sunday, same thing. So, I just want to make sure that everybody has all my numbers so they can get ahold of me. And the county number is 775-501-0002. My number on my cellphone is 775-358-0555. And my home number is 775-427-0427. I mean, 42, what is it? Okay, it really is a number. So, let's see. The Golden Valley Water Retard thing, I think it's only fair that we, we stop their payments since they're not getting the water on a temporary basis, as was requested by Mr. Roger. Anyhow, okay, so, I've had a lot of people call me from Lemon Valley and other areas where they have to drive, on Lemon Valley Drive, who have complained about the flood barriers. I just, just wanted to clarify a few things there. You know, if we took down the barriers, that seemed to be the objection, and we have a big storm and we flood again, there's, that's just not very kind to do, do that twice to a location, a group of people that have suffered greatly from the last one that we had in 2017. So, I just, I think that people would understand if, if they understood that point, that they would not be asking to have the barriers taken down. And the, not, not least, but last, I still believe in the most powerful way that we do need to figure out how to go about doing a forensic audit on our past election. I believe that people of the county deserve to know that we hold election, we have election integrity in Washoe County, and this is, this would prove that. If, if we have no problems with the forensic audit, then we know, hey, we, we are okay, we're, we're not to blame for any problems. So, let's think about clarifying that, and a forensic audit would do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Any other commissioners wishing to speak at this time? Vice Chairman.
Thank you. When we have an opportunity, it would be nice to just have Waste Management come and talk to us about how they're doing, how single-stream recycling is doing. I'd also like to talk to them just about the trucks that pass through Washoe County from California down the freeway, and just, you know, find out if, if they're actually dealing with some of that stuff and not just putting it on end on. Just a, just a conversation about, about kind of some of their, their business practices, basically. Thank you.
All right. Seeing nothing further from any of the commissioners, we will close Items Seven, and we are on to our consent agenda. There has been a request by Commissioner Hill to pull Items Eight for, Eight, Eight Three, correct? Eight D Three. Eight D Three for consideration. Eight C Four. Eight C Four, sorry, I had, I'm all over the place.
Also, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could we have Mr. Solero come up and tell us about Eight C Five? I happen to know that we put open bids out, nobody else bid on it. This was the only single bid, and I will, I will tell you, things are crazy right now. I got an unbelievable price to build a garage that, that was just, I, I can build a house cheaper. It was, no, I'm truly not kidding.
Okay, so, we'll have, we'll pull Eight C Five. Do you just need a presentation on that?
No, I don't need a presentation. I just, I just want him to, I mean, it's in the staff report that sealed bids were open.
Okay.
And I just, just a, just-
A brief, a brief-
A brief that, that we did put this out-
Okay.
-in the length of time.
Okay. And then Eight, with Eight C Four, Commissioner Hill, you wanted to pull that for a discussion, or do you want to leave it in consent for the vote, or just, you need to-
You can leave it in consent for the vote. I just had a few questions and a quick statement to make.
Okay. So, let's go to Eight C Four first and have, is there someone from staff that can answer Eight C, the questions for Commissioner Hill?
I believe I can, Mr. Chair.
All right. Mr. Manager. Commissioner Hill, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you. I just would like to first say a statement to commend our manager, who really found a lot of amazing ways to cut some costs on the capital side of this project for our Safe Camp. I think he cut it down to a third from the original estimate, and I just want to commend him on the record. Thank you so much for working on that and understanding kind of how we need to expand this program as we see fit, and also make sure that, that we are, are scaling it up in a responsible way. So, thank you for that. And I just have two questions about the program. My first question is, what are our measurements for success on the Safe Camp program?
Well, we actually have, so, for the record, this is County Manager Eric Brown. So, we actually have a series of eight metrics in the Karma Box Agreement. These are things like number of intakes and exits, how many successful guests have been transitioned into stable housing, number of hours that we provided wraparound services, and things of the like. I will tell you that the, just to frame what the objective of the Safe Camp is, it's to verify, this is a pilot, and the reason we're doing this pilot is to verify that the Safe Camp concept is or is not a viable alternative to a shelter, which is the other option that we will be making available here within the next couple of weeks. But is the Safe Camp a viable, safe way to offer another option to our guests who do not want to go into a shelter? And can we achieve the same outcomes in terms of successfully transitioning them to stable housing?
Great, great, thank you. And then, when will the RFQ be going out for bidding this service after we've decided, or when we've decided that this program's a success?
Yeah, Commissioner, we're thinking that late July or early August, just long enough for us to verify that it's working or not working. Obviously, you wouldn't want to do the RFQ or RFP if we have a bad experience, I guess is what I would say.
Sure.
So, so, we're thinking around the first of August, this is when it'll go out.
Thank you. I'm really excited for us to get this program started, and I think the community as well is very excited, and thank you for all your work on this, Mr. Manager.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. And that satisfies all your needs for, okay. And then, Vice Chairman Hartung, Eight C Five. Looks like we have Mr. Solero, our Assistant County Manager, approaching the podium.
So, just, just a quick question, Mr. Solero. We, we put this out for a competitive bid. How long was it out for bid?
Commissioner, for the record, Dave Solero, Assistant County Manager, this, this was out for, I believe, the, the required period of 21 business days that we necessarily need to bid our projects.
Okay. And we got one bidder?
We did receive one, one sealed bid-
One sealed bid.
-at bid opening day.
Okay, yep, that's what I thought. I, I, I understand. I've had a hard time even getting people to come out and give me a quote. It's just crazy right now. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So, what will, now, it seems like, other than, if there are, oh, Commissioner Herman, do you have other questions? What item?
Yeah, I wanted to ask this gentleman that was just up there-
Mr. Solero.
I, what I wanted to ask was, if we're at the end of this COVID thing, do we really need to set up another place for, at that price? I mean, what is your opinion on that? You know more than I do.
Sure, for, for the Commissioner through the chair, you know, this is, this is something that, as you'll recall, in the February, March timeframe, we were in the process of not having enough vaccine for the, or not having enough, yeah, not enough supply for the demand that we had heading in. And so, we were projecting out into the future on how much vaccine we would need for our community. In fact, we are still, on a daily basis, vaccinating hundreds of people through our pod site. And so, yes, we do still have a need for a site for our vaccination efforts to continue. As we continue to open up our economy and events within the community, the space that we're currently utilizing is impacting our ability to do that. And so, we've identified, we had identified four or five locations to look at, and this was the least expensive location that would be out of the way to allow us to continue to operate the pod for as long as we're going to need to do that to provide vaccinations for our community. So, we, we do indeed need to move this to a location that is not impacting some of the other events that occur at the facility that we're utilizing. And I want to assure the commissioners and the public that we did look at multiple locations, and this is the least expensive, best location that we could find.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I would interject that I think we should bear in mind, this will likely not be the last pandemic we face. So, some of the things we're doing, we're, we're looking down the road, saying, how do we get better? How do we put the, the infrastructure in place such that if it occurred again, we're not starting from scratch? So, something to consider.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and Commissioner Herman. You know, and I would also add that I would put on the record, most of these expenses are being paid for through either the, the money received from the CARES Act, or monies that have been allocated to us from the American Recovery Act as well. So, those, both, these are not coming directly out of General Fund or, or tax revenue. This is, these are allocations to respond to the pandemic through the federal government to Washoe County independently. So, for those concerns that are out there. Vice Chairman, I have you signed in next.
And, and I just would add, and I'm pretty sure this will probably also be used for those who want booster shots at, at some point in the future.
That's right.
And, and they could probably even be used for giving flu vaccines, you know, any, any type of vaccinations for the community. So, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman, and Commissioner Herman. Do appreciate that. All right. Any further discussion on any of the items, other items in the consent agenda as posted? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to accept the consent agenda as drafted.
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. And before we move on, I want to make sure that we identify Mr., these, there are appointments that are listed in here. We will be appointing Mr. Clay Thomas to the Board of Adjustment for District Three, Mr. Ken Crater to the Planning Commission as a CIAC member. This is a Capital Improvements Commission, is that they convene in. And then, Mr. Adam Kramer as our representative to the Airport Authority to replace Mr. Nat Caricelli. We have a motion and a second. All those, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, oh, do we have public comment?
We have no public comment on any of these items.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Seeing no public comment, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting. All right, Mr. Manager, or actually, Mr. Vice Chair, do we have a block vote today?
For the board's consideration, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that you entertain Item 11 and 12 for a block vote.
All right. We have Items for 11 and 12 for a block vote, and in the form of a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Hill. Any public comment on these items?
I have nobody signed in.
All right, seeing no public comments on Items 11 or 12, I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Didn't want the manager to read them.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, please, would you please read them into the agenda? I'm running-
Sorry, Bob.
My, my pace is going at a different speed. Sorry, sir.
All right. Item 11 is a recommendation to approve an agreement for professional consulting services between Washoe County and COTS Environmental Consulting to provide pre-construction cultural resource mitigation activities for Reach Three of the Pleasant Valley Sewer Interceptor Project within the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility Service Area in the amount of $391,681, which is a condition of implementation of the historic property's treatment plan for the Pleasant Valley Interceptor Reach Three Project. Item Number 12 is a recommendation to approve the submission of the Safe Camp Pilot Grant Application in the amount of $244,062, no county match, to the State of Nevada Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Round Two Funding to be used specifically for the prevention of Preparation Four in response to the coronavirus, and if approved, authorize the county manager to execute the document concerning same.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And now that we've had both of those items written to the record, Madam Clerk, is there, I will call for public comment one more time?
There is nobody signed in.
All right. Seeing nobody sign in, I have a motion from the Vice Chair, a second from Commissioner Hill on this item. There is no public comment. I'll call for the vote one more further time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Jung, absent for the moment. All right, Mr. Manager. With that, that takes us to Item Nine.
Item Nine is a recommendation to acknowledge status report and possible direction to staff on the county manager's recommended fiscal year 2022 budget, and direct the county manager to return to the Board of County Commission with a tentative and final budget incorporating the approved county manager's recommendations to adoption at a public hearing to be scheduled on May 18, 2021. And in chambers today, Mr. Chair, I believe we have Assistant County Manager Valetich and Budget Director Cook.
All right. Welcome, Assistant County Manager Valetich. Ms. Cook, nice to see you both this morning.
Thank you. Nice to see you as well, Chair and Board. All right, well, the moment we've all been waiting for, the recommended fiscal year 2022 budget. Make sure I remember how to do this. Okay. Just a quick look at the timeline, I know you're all familiar, but for the benefit of others, we start the process in January with a strategic planning session with the board, review financial results, both prior year-end and mid-year. February and March, we work with departments, we develop cost estimates, revenue estimates, and all that type of work that happens. We meet with the CIP Committee to talk about capital projects. Then in April, we develop a tentative budget that's filed with the state. It needs to be filed, or it's required to be filed by mid-April, April 15. We work with the county manager and with commissioners on budget requests and items. And today, we're here to present the recommended budget to the Board of County Commissioners. We have the required public- Commissioners. We have the required public hearing for budget adoption scheduled for next Tuesday, May 18. Well, what a year it's been. I don't have to tell anybody in the room today about that, but just kind of a quick look back where we were last year at this time, like every other organization or local government in the nation and probably the world. You know, we had a pandemic that was declared. Our economy took a very steep and sharp downturn because of lockdowns. Consumer spending went down very rapidly. Unemployment shot up. In fact, in April 2020, Nevada's unemployment rate was almost 20%. That was the highest in state history ever. So, doing a budget last year at this time was very, very challenging. Needless to say, we were experiencing acute financial impact, revenue loss, non-budgeted expenditures that we needed to make to respond to the pandemic. The Board of County Commissioners adopted the following goals. We wanted to maintain services to the citizens, keep employees working, and use our reserves wisely. And at that time, the duration and severity of the pandemic was not yet understood. So let's bring forward to spring of 2021. Things are looking a little bit better. I'm really happy to be able to say that to you. Our revenue loss was not as great as we anticipated. We did have a couple of months of sharp downturn, but it wasn't as dire, which is good. I would much rather have it go that way than the other way. We did receive federal funding from the CARES Act, $20 million, which we've deployed. We spent county funds and have pending claims with FEMA, about $7 million outstanding right now. We obtained emergency rental assistance funding, $6.6 million. That is currently being distributed. And the second round of federal stimulus for the American CARES Act, or American Rescue Plan, sorry, too many acronyms, ARP, American Rescue Plan, is coming. We were notified yesterday of the interim final guidelines on the spending of that money. It's about a 150-page document that we're digesting right now. We have registered through the portal to receive the funds, so that they should be coming very shortly. And that would be 50% of the money that will be coming to us now, and then the other 50% in a year from now, basically. Our economy is cautiously improving. We still have a pandemic, but you know, our vaccination efforts have been promising. We're starting to ease some of the lockdowns in businesses. It's coming. Our unemployment rate is still high, but it's less so in northern Nevada. We're really lucky to have more diverse economy here. You know, right now, the state, this was the latest numbers from March, the state was at 8.1%. That's quite a contrast to almost 20% a year ago. And Washoe County was at 4.6%. Okay, so on to the budget, the recommended budget. Okay, so for fiscal year 2022, this is all funds, right? We have our governmental funds, which include the General Fund, special revenue, capital projects, debt service, and then some proprietary funds, our internal service and enterprise funds. Totals $829 million, so close, close to a billion dollars budget. And we have a new fund in there. You'll hear more about. The Board established the homelessness fund a few months back, and this is intended to help us account for and budget all of our programs to support homeless services. Just some quick highlights, and we will take a deeper dive. You know, what we really want to focus on this year, we have a lot going on, but we still want to maintain and sustain financial stability. That's one of our core strategic plan goals as a county. We still have ongoing pandemic response and recovery costs, but obviously, federal funding will help us to manage that. We're expanding regional homelessness services. We're expanding library services and hours. We have property tax refunds to make. That's a legal obligation due to the settlement. We're adding 35 full-time equivalent positions, so, which is very positive. The county hasn't really been able to add a lot of staffing since the Great Recession. We have additional funding for Commissioner's support. There's some staffing in there, some systems and resources to help with that. Our legislative session is still in progress right now, so we're still looking to see how that's going to end up. There may be some unfunded mandates that come out of that, and maybe some funding reductions, but we're keeping a close eye on that. And we've planned for that as much as we could. We will be recommending to restore some reserves. If you recall, last year, due to the COVID pandemic, we drew down the stabilization reserve. That's the one that we accessed in 2017 when we had the floods, at $3 million. We had just replenished it the year before. So we'd like to restore that. And we also took out $3 million from the risk management fund. So both of those we're recommending to be restored. We'd like to restore the capital improvement program funding. Last year, we did not fund any capital projects out of the General Fund, and we can't keep doing that. We still have projects, and a lot of them are facility projects, roof replacements, those kind of things that we just simply can't let go for too long. And we'd like to restore the contingency budget in the General Fund. We drew that down to a bare minimum. And as you'll see, we are recommending that to be funded at the maximum this year because we do have a lot of uncertainties. So just by function, it gives you an idea, this pie chart, the different functions that the county does. Our largest is public safety at 29%, followed by welfare at 22%, which that will include homelessness services there. General government is maybe a little bit higher this year than it normally would be, at 14%, because we've got money budgeted in there to make those property tax refunds. And then just by fund type, the General Fund, of course, by far the largest fund, about 53% of the total. So a little bit more about General Fund, and we try not to use too many small numbers in here, but this, this is always a good snapshot of the General Fund. It's sources and uses. And so you can see in the far left corner is fiscal year 2020 actuals. That's how we ended last year, at June 30, 2020. And then the second column over is the fiscal year 21 year-end estimate. So we're pretty close to the end of the budget year. You know, we're in early May. Our fiscal year ends June 30, so we do the year-end estimate. And it looks like, because revenues came in better than we initially budgeted, some of the other cost-saving measures that were taken, looks like we're going to end the year with an addition to fund balance of about $21.5 million. And so part of what will be recommended during the public hearing for budget adoption is to utilize some of that fund balance to restore those reserves that I just talked about. Then if we look to fiscal year 22 recommended budget, you can see that total revenues or total sources, which also includes transfers in, are going up about 5 million, sorry, 5% or 19 million. And then our total uses are increasing 20%, so about $75 million. And largely, that's because we have property tax refunds in there budgeted. Those are kind of a one-time thing that will happen over the next two years, but we wanted to ensure that we have enough budgeted because we really can't predict very exactly how many claims we're going to get in the first year. So we are showing a use of fund balance of $34.5 million. And just a little bit more about fund balance, because usually that's a great topic of discussion. So we're predicting a use of fund balance of $34.5 million. You can see that top graph goes back to '07. It kind of shows the ups and downs. You know, in some years, we do have to have one-time costs or bridge a budget deficiency to use fund balance. And you can see those there. You can see the Great Recession years, and then the North Valleys flood in particular. And then the bottom graph just shows the total sources in blue, total uses in red, and then that green is kind of the fund balance. So it gives you an idea of what is there. Based on the recommended budget, we are looking at an unassigned ending fund balance, because some of it is restricted, but the unassigned portion of $72.6 million. So that would be 16.7% of our recommended budgeted expenditures, less capital outlay, which is within the Board's policy of between 10 and 17%. And it equates to about 44 days of operating cash. And that's important. I know we've talked before, our revenues don't come in equally each month, so we do need to maintain enough cash to be able to pay the bills in those months when property taxes are not coming in. Okay, I think this is where I turn it over to Lori. She's going to take a little bit of a deeper dive than I have, so we'll be around for questions.
Thanks, Ms. Cook. Welcome, Ms. Cook.
Thank you. Good, I guess it's afternoon now, huh? Good afternoon. For the record, Lori Cook, Budget Manager. So, looking at our, I'm sorry, I'm trying not to touch my mask. Total sources of $401 million, which is reflective of an 18% increase over where we anticipated in this fiscal year. The majority of that, as we've seen in prior years, 84% is coming from property tax and consolidated tax. And that's one of the reasons last year, when we were before the Board and, you know, kind of everything was shutting down, we didn't know what was going to happen with taxable sales, and that is the over 82% of what we received for consolidated tax. So if that were to take a material, or have a material impact, negative impact, of course, then that is going to have a material impact for resources within the General Fund. So that 84% of total revenue, so property tax totals in the General Fund for next year's budgeted, $203 million. We do reconcile to the state pro forma, so our assessor and our treasurer, they get their information together, and they go through and do their segregation reports and all their technical requirements. And then they submit it to the state. The state takes, gets the centrally assessed and net proceeds of mining, and then it all comes together and becomes that estimate. And with the la, I did, I looked at it, within the last 10 years, we've been within 1% of budget. So that's usually a pretty accurate number. C-Tax, we're right now estimating at $131 million. We have different sources of information related to, you know, what is fiscal year 22 going to look like? What is the recovery going to look like? Could there possibly be a variant to surge those types of things? And so that's based on just historical analysis, where we are year-to-date, and what we anticipate moving forward into next year. So again, this is, it might not be familiar for maybe everybody in the audience, but the Commission, we talked about with our two, our largest sources. So those are the charts showing, you can see with the property tax, in 2006, we're abatement, and that's the amount that is not collected. So it's not billed to the property owner. It's not collected by the county. And then, obviously, consolidated tax. And so when we started to recover and get to the recovery, because we do have a cap on property tax, you can see that that's a much, I'll call it a flatter increase, a flatter recovery than you see on consolidated tax. That's consumer-driven. But again, is much more impacted by potential consumer or, it's a leading indicator. If we start seeing taxable sales go down, we can kind of try to figure out what's going on. And so, the forecast for '22 for C-Tax is 4.5% over what we think is going to happen in '21. And then the '22 forecast is a 6.2% increase versus where we think we're going to land for '21. Then, had, what are, you know, what's, what's, what's being funded? So again, the majority of that is salaries and benefits. That's not new. It is a little bit less of an amount than in prior years because we have to account for those settlement payments. And so when you look at the total bottom line, salaries and benefits are a little less as a percentage, but they are, it is still our largest expense. We have services and supplies at 15%, settlement payments, nine, and then transfers out at 12%. And then those actual figures, you can see to the right. Recommended positions, this is, Christine had talked about it earlier, but we have, right, we have General Fund positions. We also have positions in non-General Fund. And so we have positions here, basically every function that we operate within the General Fund. So facilities, library, public safety, public defense or judicial, as well as general government. And so the Board knows there will be, there's specifics related to that for next week's board item, and it's a separate attachment, and it has all the specifics related to those positions. And then reclassification, so there are positions that through, for a variety of reasons, get submitted for reclassification of the job specification. With some exceptions, those go through the Job Evaluation Committee. And so we have those listed on here, too, by the function and the department. And sometimes they come back, it's just a title change. Sometimes it's a pay range change. It just depends on the outcome. Transfers out, it's a large use within the General Fund, so we like to have this outlined, so it's, you know, transparent and clear what these transfers out support. So we have the normals, is what I'm going to call them. The homelessness fund is new, and we've had as late as, or it was early, I guess, so late as, late last week. There are some changes there, but we will identify and we'll call those out when we present next week. And then capital improvement to reinstate that, that base funding that we'd had prior. And then I'll just bring, debt services, a little bit less. We've gone through, you've seen them, some refundings where we have to come to the Board, and we're basically refinancing for better interest rate. What that does is we see that here where we don't have to transfer as much because we're paying less interest. So talking about other funds, and the new homelessness fund that the Board approved, there are multiple programs. There are different departments. So there are eight programs within Human Services, and those are outlined, that last bullet under Programs. But there are also all these other program areas that we, the homelessness initiative with the Sheriff's Office, the Board approved that last year to support their initiative, and that will be in this fund. Crossroads will reflect in this fund. We have the CARES Campus, so we have the actual shelter, as well as the Safe Camp, continuum of care related to homelessness services, Housing Administration, and then the existing programs related under Human Services. And so the funding, we can see it's the total use of a little over $16 million. Again, there have been some changes, well, I know, next week. But we have, I mean, I think a telling is 44.5 FTEs. I don't know if we've ever, like, been able to wrap our arms around, well, what does this look like? And, you know, how are we, but, I mean, that's pretty, in my opinion, it's pretty substantial, and it's a, it's obviously where we're starting. It's not going to look like this most likely in five years, but this is where we're starting. And there are different funding mechan, or different funding sources. So the transfer from Marijuana Fund is to support the Sheriff's Initiative, which was approved by the Board last year. And then we have General Fund and Indigent Fund transfers. Other funds, we do have additional positions that are being requested. So within the homelessness fund, those positions, they have come to the Board out of cycle, but they are still new for fiscal year '22. We have CPS, sorry, Child Protective Services, as well as the expansion for library services. And then, within Equipment Services and within Human Services for Senior Services, two reclassifications. So now we go into the fund, are there any questions, anything we've covered so far? Clarifications, anybody?
I don't see any questions so far.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Jung.
I have a quick question about the transfers out.
Yes.
And I see here that we are transferring out almost a million dollars more this year in indigent funding to our local hospital partners? Why is that?
So this is the transfer that goes to the Indigent Services Fund, and so it funds more than just the, the hospital aspect of it. There is an NRS to increase that appropriation 4.5% a year, so that's that growth from last year. But that also supports, it's not just the disproportionate hospital share. There's a lot of funding that goes into indigent, and it flows out. And so indigent fund also supports our, there's a veterans program that's in there. That $21 million that's transferred, a portion of that is being transferred to homelessness fund.
Okay.
To help those programs.
Right.
There are a lot of different.
How much of, what percentage would you ballpark would go of the now $21 million? How much of, what percentage would you ballpark would go of the now $21 million of indigent funds? How much, what proportion of that goes to our local hospital partners?
I don't have that off, I'm sorry.
I would like to have that, Mr. Brown, and I have some follow-up questions with you, Mr. County Manager, as well, in terms of how we, we keep these hospitals in pretty good business here. And I don't believe that, and a lot of times we're treated as the partners that we are. And we also don't do a good job at communicating to the cities and the school district and, you know, the other people that are our partners, that how much we keep their hospitals open. Because anybody who gets sick, hurt, or injured in Washoe County, no matter where they're from, and then they don't have insurance, Washoe County Board of Commissioners picks up the fiduciary responsibility. And I know that's negotiated pricing as well. So if I could get a little bit of history of how much we're paying per patient and per injury, you know, COVID, whatever it may be, this last year might be a little skewed, but a lot of less accidents by keeping people at home. But I'd like to see maybe a five-year trend, because I think we don't talk a lot as a community, how much the Choluli lamps in Renown, the nonprofit, and the grand pianos, that we're actually paying for those. So I don't want to get too snarky about it, but it is something that we should be talking about, and putting some different partners on notice for that as well. Thank you.
And just as a follow-up, just, you know, for the commissioners as well, we've done over, before we went to this legislative session, we did take a look at the entire indigent budget, and then, you know, kind of broke it down into, this is what's going out, so to speak, and this is what's coming in. And so in addition to the, the transfer from the general fund, there is a six cent tax levy, but when we did the analysis on that, almost all of that's going back to the state, not just for hospitals, but to the state for a variety of assessments that we have to pay. And so we have some of that, I just don't have the detail related to the actual hospital. So jumping back into capital improvement, there's nine, a little over $99 million budgeted in our capital funds. So you can see below the largest, obviously, we have utilities fund as well as the blue, which is capital improvement fund. That is able to be that larger 31% because of that reinstatement of the general fund transfer support. The majority in the utilities fund, and we have a list, I'm not going to read them for, I mean, unless somebody wants me to, but, read all of them, but the utilities, the majority of that is related to stemworf and the interceptor projects. So here, these are the new projects that are being supported with the general fund transfer. So we have, if you see at the bottom, there's a total of 30 million that is budgeted or recommended budget for, for fund this fund. The new projects are the ones that you can see on the list, they have a variety of funding sources. So that bottom line is based, is the net number of other sources, whether it's coming from a different fund, or whether we have identified, you know, potential grant funding. To kind of back up a little bit, so the board is also aware, what we, what is not included in this recommended budget is the ARP funds. So they're not reflected in the overall appropriations. When those funds are awarded and received, we will come to the board, we will have to amend the budget to include those. But there are, there is a potential for either current, or I'll call them waitlist, or identified projects to be able to have that ARP funding used for them. So because we don't have that funding, and we didn't really, we didn't have guidelines yet, that's not in the recommended budget. So these are, you know, more of the ongoing, and some of these, a lot of these reflect what was deferred. So at the end of last year, we deferred 2.1 million dollars in projects, and this year we, we deferred 6.3 that we had identified. So it was 8.4 million total. These are the other funds. So within the parks fund, capital fund, we can see the recommended projects within the parks fund. Utilities fund is a little bit smaller, kind of, I wanted to get it on one slide, so it was, you know, the information was in one place. But we can see the stemworf expansion, as well as the Pleasant Valley Interceptor and other affluent projects are the majority of the budget. And then in roads capital, that's the, the capital that we have to pay for, you know, repairs or whatnot that we do with roads. And equipment services is our fleet. So technically, those fall under the capital because they're, because of the amount and the lifespan of what is purchased, becomes a capital expenditure. So the next steps, Christine had already talked about, is next week for the public hearing. And then June 1st is the day that I either, June 1st or prior, have to personally hand deliver two signed copies. We don't have electronic signatures, I guess, no, and, yeah, for the state, so to taxation. And that's the day that we have to submit it. If we don't meet that deadline, people have asked me before, well, what's the big deal? The big deal is that the state could say, well, then your certified budget is the current budget, your fiscal year '21 budget, and that would not be, that would not be a good day for us, if we don't have an adopted fiscal year '22 budget, just because of the changes we've seen, so.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Cook. And Ms. Valdez, we do appreciate the presentation. Are there any questions for either Ms. Cook or?
Ms. Cook.
Mr. Manager, go ahead.
First of all, I want to thank Ms. Valdez and Ms. Cook for doing their usual stellar job on preparing the presentation. But for any of the department heads or staff, leadership that might be listening or viewing this meeting, I also want to thank you, because to add that kind of, of fund balance in a year with the uncertainty that we were facing over the last year, going through a pandemic, I think is, is a true testament to the quality of folks that we have working here at the county. And I would point out that last year, although it was unpopular to do so, we started having weekly review committee meetings. They were a pain in the neck for many of the department heads, who complained about it to me and probably to many of you. But as a result of that, we were able to still sustain the policy mandates that the board gave the departments. We simply adjusted some of the timing with which hires were made or expenditures were made. And it, it shows up in our, our expense savings that, that we were able to generate year over year. So I just want to say thank you to all involved, because it hasn't been an easy year, but it has certainly been one where, again, given all that we faced as a county, I'm really pleased with what the outcomes were.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, I do appreciate that. Commissioner Herman, I, you have, have you signed in for some questions?
I just want to thank our county manager, because without him guiding the ship, I don't think we'd be where we are. So, and thank you to all, all the rest of you that have worked so hard on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. I have a couple of questions and I, and I'll have a brief statement. Ms. Cook, can you go back to, it would be slide 22, but also 24? I'll start with 22. Slide 22 shows our parks capital fund, obviously with all our capital improvements, roughly about 7% in a number of the, you know, for all of our improvements to our, our facilities. And then you actually go to 24, and you see the actual number, which is about 6.5 million dollars. And a lot of these are ongoing maintenance and just basic renovations to keep upkeep for, for the parks. Is that correct, for our park system?
That's my understanding, yes. Sometimes there's new funding that comes in that allows the Parks Community Services Division to embark on, you know, a new type of venture. But for the most part, right, these are existing facilities and things that are either being brought up to code or revamped or whatnot.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ms. Cook. My comment would be, and Commissioner Herman's exactly, is absolutely right. The manager has done a phenomenal job of really taking the policy direction from this board, not only us, but also working with the department heads and all staff, honestly, throughout the county, to carry forth a very robust budget, very detailed budget, on, with your, with your help, but adding different services. And the one thing that we, and I understand the challenges and kind of some of the over looming liability that we have as it pertains to Incline Village and some of these settlements that we have to address, but what I'd like to see going forward, as we talk so much in, about general, general government needs and salaries and benefits and overall government expenditures, these are tax dollars a lot of the time. You know, I'd like to see those parks budgets. I, I've heard it for seven years now, how parks have always been decimated, how we've never really set, we've never set parks back, and it's, it's true. It's, it's a, it's a tired rhetoric that we shouldn't continue to say. We talk about indigent services and how we, we offset and subsidize million-dollar companies that provide health care and have a number of different ways of revenue and source. Our parks have zero, zero revenue, but they provide such a unique experience for our community. And Bartley Ranch serves as a music, through Art Town and through, or through events, so many different things. Rancho San Rafael, the Splash Park in North Valleys, a splash, Splash Park out in Lazy, the Lazy Six Ranch, Lazy Five Ranch. All of these are huge assets to the county, and we, I are doing, I don't feel that we're doing a justice to these parks. I, I took my son to play flag football at Idrawal the other day, one of, and, and look, City of Reno, and that park has been tired and challenged for years. But I wa, I drove by the pool the other day, and they installed one of the most beautiful pieces of playground equipment. The pool looks fantastic. They have actually really asserted themselves to provide that service to their community. And you see that over and over throughout the, throughout the, and I want to start doing that with our parks. You know, the one thing through different ties, spending time in, in the community, not just here in Reno, but as I've traveled through the summer and through, over the last couple of years, you go to some of these different parks, they have not just playground equipment for kids, but they have bouldering and stuff for, for adults to go and, and practice. They have, do all kinds, as an outdoor community. Now, I'm not saying that we go and, you know, find $400 million and buy the most illustrious parks in the world that are, you know, rival, I'm just saying, for the first time, let's start changing the narrative and giving back to the community that we, that, you know, instead of just saying, well, you know, government expenses increased this year, we better keep doing that, let's find a way to identify funding for parks. Let's pick areas that could really, because to keep these parks just at a, you know, a, a status quo, or just to make it, they'll just, so they can get through, kind of, we're doing an injustice, not only to ourselves, but to the community. And I think that's, I, I just don't want to be in that position any further. So I'd like to see that, Mr. Manager, now, obviously not this year, and we're not going to make any changes before the 18th, but going forward into '22, I'd like to have that be a serious consideration.
We can certainly do that, Mr. Chair, and even look for an opportunity perhaps to use our money for that, to get it started.
That would be fantastic. I would appreciate that, Mr. Manager.
Sorry, Chair, if I could too, it wasn't outlined in here, like, specifically, and it's not addressing your bigger concern about, you know, new facilities, enhanced facilities, but there are, I'll call them reinstatements related to trail maintenance and noxious weed programs within the, the parks budget that's included in the rec, in the recommended budget. So again, it's not necessarily directly related to, you know, those types of things, but we have, you know, from getting information from community services and through Eric Crump and whatnot, we were able to get those into this year's recommended budget.
Thank you, Ms. Cook, I do appreciate that. Commissioner Hill, have you signed in next?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I agree, I think that that is something we should definitely work on, just improving those parks and people's quality of life. And we know that through COVID, that being outdoors is key for people for that just better lifestyle. And I would say that what's exciting about this year's budget is because, is that we've really addressed, I think, some of the issues that we've been hearing about libraries for years. And so, you know, expanding services for libraries in all the districts is a very exciting move. And I think that this commission is being very bold and, and showing that we really care about that community service, as well as our homeless services and some other community services that we're, we're really concentrating on. So I'm very excited about this budget, and I agree, I look forward to the ARP discussions and next, planning for next fiscal year.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I, I wasn't going to jump on this bandwagon and beat on it, but I'd like you to notice in, in '22, there's not one expenditure for Spanish Springs. Not one. Not one for District Four. Not one. Everything else is spent everywhere else.
Santa Claus, if you're, if good, if you're good.
Says my, says my wealthy Aunt Kitty. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any further questions for either Ms. Valdez or Ms. Cook at this time? Commissioner Jung, I guess.
I just, I want to put on the record to the vice chairman, I really do mean that. I think we should do a look back. I think we've had, we have new players at the table now, we have a new manager, we have a little bit of a new fiscal philosophy, I believe, as well. And I think we should expect, in as much as possible, to have some sort of conformance in terms of fairness, but of course, if you look at District Five, how many millions was spent for the flood, for basically eight houses, if that? There are things that we can't control, is what my point is, and that end up being big expenses. But I think that the vice chairman has a very good point there, and we would like to see the budget office to come back with maybe the last five years of investments into each district, obviously knowing that emergencies and acts of nature are, it means nothing for that, and that you kind of have to look at it with a wider lens. But as a commissioner who won't be here in a year and a half, I would like to see what the heck, what have you done for me lately, basically, Mr. Vice Chairman and Chairman? And I understand that to make it completely equitable and right down to the dollar makes zero sense, but I do mean it to you, Mr. Vice Chairman, I will remember you next year, and let's work together so I can help you plan this for you as well. I know you have a lot of big projects that you have been railing against up here, and I could name them all right now, but I won't. But I'm very happy to help you with that, and I recognize the inequity that is sometimes built in and sometimes just acts of what happens in, in, in nature and what we can and cannot control, or is an emerging issue. But I promise you, I will work with you on that very seriously and with staff. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. I mean, Commissioner Jung, Vice, Vice Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and something that I, I don't think, and I see one in the North Valleys, and we can use these in all of our districts, which is dog parks. People, people love to go to dog parks, and, and even have the, the training facilities and et cetera for the, it's like CrossFit or something for dogs, I can't remember the name of it, it's escaping me. But, but the other thing that I don't see on any of our, and in, in our parks, and again, not to, not to jump on this, but it's huge, and I get calls on this all the time, it's pickleball. I get, I mean, and, and in District Two.
We have one in Hidden Valley, yeah.
Yeah, we have a small pickleball court in Spanish Springs, but, I mean, it, it's, if, if we built more, they would come.
And I, I would agree with the vice chairman and Commissioner Jung is that, and it's not necessarily a, you know, let's make it all even, you know, whatever, and I, because that is, our job appears to create policy, it's, it's staff's job to provide the, the facilities and know where the need is. I would like to, I don't necessarily, I'm not looking at the itemized, I'm looking at the bottom number of 6.5 million and feel that's inadequate for a park, for a county as large as ours. I just feel that, that, that we're doing a disservice. And so when we, when we look at it ongoing forward, Mr. Manager and staff, I'd like to see that number be larger than it is now. When you talk about $53 million towards a utility fund, and I understand utility and infrastructure is necessary for growth and whatnot, six and a half million dollars and a, almost three-quarter of a billion-dollar budget is pent, is really small. And, and it's those kinds of discussions that this board needs to start having from a policy level, about where are our priorities and what do we really want to see for our community, for our, you know, many people come, public comment, pointed at our walls, and, and these mission statements really have not changed for us. If we're going to provide safe and secure communities, part of having a safe and secure community is having people that are enjoying being outside. I know Commissioner Jung frequents Rancho San Rafael and tells me how wonderful that park is, and how amazing it is to be close to our home and utilize that. I use the South Valleys facility. Those facilities mean so much to so many people, whether you go to the playground, whether you walk your dog, it doesn't matter. It's part of our job here at the county is to provide that experience. And so I think that's what we need to focus on. With all that being said, we beat up on parks enough, I think, but... With all that being said, we beat up on parks enough, I think, but any, do we have any public comment? Madam Clerk, I'll sign in on this.
Mr. Chairman, we have one email received from Helene Larson.
Okay.
Placed on, on record.
And you will place it on record, okay. Seeing no further public comment, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
I have a motion from the Vice Chairman, second from Commissioner Jung. Seeing no further public comment, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
See you next week.
Ms. Cook, Ms. Valetich, we'll see you next Tuesday. Thank you, ladies. All right. Mr. Manager, we are on to item 10, sir.
Item 10 is a recommendation and possible action to approve an amendment to the Washoe County COVID-19 Local Mitigation and Enforcement Plan to allow adult entertainment establishments, nightclubs and dayclubs as outlined in Section 27 of Directive 21 to be open prior to the current date of June 1st, 2021, as included in the original plan. And direct the staff to submit the amended plan for information to the COVID-19 Mitigation and Management Task Force as required by the Governor's Declaration of Emergency Directive 44. Yes.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Manager. We have Assistant County Manager, Mr. Solero, with us today, who's also serves as the Emergency Management Director. I had asked for this to be placed on the agenda for discussion today to address some of the needs of nightclubs, dayclubs and the adult entertainment within our, our county. Number of these facilities do not reside within the unincorporated area, but within the city limits of both municipalities. And the one thing we forgot was to address that. And my belief is that they're no different than bars and restaurants that we've allowed in the previous plan. And so I wanted to bring it back for an opportunity, not to necessarily pick winners and losers, but just to allow for the discussion of what would be at the pleasure of this board to amend the plan to allow them to operate immediately through the remainder of the month until June 1st. So with that, Mr. Solero, can you walk us through potentially the amendment for the plan, sir?
Sure, Mr. Chair, for the record, Dave Solero, Assistant County Manager, really the only change that's being proposed is on the very last page of the mitigation measures plant, portion of the plan, that talks about adult entertainment establishments, nightclubs and dayclubs. Currently, the plan as approved last week was that these establishments would be open June 1st and they would remain closed through the month of May, as the Chair suggested. There's a request to, to change that. And so we've provided some, some draft language for you all. Was pointed out to me by the Health Officer that we should probably put in here allowed to open May 11th, 2021, 11:59 PM, following all applicable local authority, social distancing, hygiene and performance rules established within the state directives and guidance. That's the proposed language to this board to allow these establishments to open.
Mr. Solero, I'll quickly, also for the record, with the addition of Directive 44 and the issuance of local authority plan, no longer do we have to necessarily have the endorsement of the local authorities or, or, or colleagues and within the community, but we have asked for them. Did you receive any endorsements for this or non-endorsements or, or opposition?
So as of this morning, I only had one, one email of endorsement from the School District and that essentially said that, you know, we don't have a, a dog in this fight, so to speak. So they're endorsing the, the change to us and wanted to leave it up to the Health District and the local jurisdictions that have these establishments to weigh in. So that's what I received from the, the School District, but I have not received anything else from any of the other entities.
All right.
All righty then.
All right. Mr. Vice Chairman, I have you sign in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I, and I think that this is important to, what, what many people don't realize is just reopening is not as easy as just reopening. The supply chains of labor or, or just the labor chain and the supply chain for the, the goods that, that these places would utilize, the food and the, the drinks, the, everything that goes in to making of a nightclub, and this is what we were talking about last week. I mean, it, it's going to take them some time. I was in conversation with one of the casino owners and he told me that he could not get large quantities of, of alcohol, of beer and, and et cetera, even, even if, you know, we were to reopen them instantly. And so it's, it's one of those things that we've got to do this as soon as possible, in my opinion. And I think you're, you're wise, we're wise to do this and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for putting this back on our agenda. And again, it gives them an opportunity to say, okay, we, we're able to be open. Let's, let's ramp up for that and get planned. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Jung, I'll have you sign in next.
Thank you, and I want to apologize to my colleague here, the, the Vice Chairman, because I, I, in my frustration of this back and forth last week, I, I didn't listen to his whole plea of what he saw that we had missed and had been alerted to that we had missed this. And for that, I deeply apologize. I think we could have handled this actually last Tuesday and probably got the vote for it, frankly. And I am in support of this. Let me tell you a couple of reasons why. Number one is I don't understand what it is sometimes that we do, and I think it's cultural. I'm not a native Nevadan, so I don't understand it completely, but I'm, I'm 22 years here, so kind of close. Sometimes we go lockstep with Clark County and then other times we're like, we're not doing that because Clark did it. And I think that it is a disservice, this, this subjective way we go into it, no matter what position you're taking. But I think in this time, it was more important to be in accordance with the second, with the largest county. We're the second largest in terms of gaming, revenue, you know, tourism, et cetera. Entertainment of the adults type, which, you know, Vegas is, or it can only happen in Vegas, but we, and we are an offshoot of that, nothing like them. But I think it was on my part, I will take the, the blame for this. I think I dismissed you, I was frustrated, I didn't know what you were talking about, and it was wrong, because I think we could have taken care of it, boom, right there on the spot and put that in there, and I didn't understand that, so please forgive me for that. I think this makes good sense because it's in accordance with the largest county in Nevada. And more importantly, what the Vice Chairman had said as well, if they don't, okay, June 1st is cool and all, but everybody's focusing on June 1st. The entire logistics chain to bring stuff to where whomever has the dollar, where if we can give our, the North, the second, the second largest county, if we can give ourselves those couple weeks of room, people can, who run these establishments, which bring in a great deal of sales tax, I might say, who run these establishments can get a leg up and at least be at a level playing field of where they are in that supply chain. So because of that, I am in support of this. I would have supported this last Tuesday if I understood it and didn't dismiss it because of my frustration with the confusion that we've all been under. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm glad that the Vice Chairman prevailed. And I, I do reserve the right to change my mind every day, every moment, I'm usually changing my mind. So because I get more information and I understand the, the issue much better, I think what you do in this is many of these larger establishments, but even the small ones, take a lot of direction from the Nevada Resort Association. And, you know, they do have the NRA of Nevada, it's a different NRA. The Nevada Resort Association are in the business of keeping those businesses running, but also out of liability. So I believe if they trust that they know how to do that, who the heck am I? Because there's a lot of businesses, if I was in charge, would be shut down, but you don't want that, based on my, you know, subjective experience. But I would like for anybody who's going in to order alcohol, going in to order a DJ, that they can get on their, at least on their calendar and get in that supply chain so that we're not left in Northern Nevada going, oh, we didn't, we can't get anything to do that, we can't throw any party, to make up for this lost revenue that we know is a real deal, whether you are a tiny establishment or a 2,000 person resort. I never want to put Northern Nevada behind anybody else who's competing with us, if we can. And I feel like that put us at a, put these business owners and projectioners, projectionists one step behind everyone else. So I'm fully in support of this now that I understand it. And again, I, I beg you to forgive me for dismissing it last week because it was wrong and it was more of an emotional state than it was anything rational, but I'm glad that you persisted. That's why I love working with a bunch of bulldogs, because you just cannot get rid of these guys. And that's what this bulldog needs. So thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman and Mr. Chairman. You're not old.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Any further questions for Assistant County Manager? Mr. Manager, I, I, Ms. Solero, I think that the way I'm reading the draft information in here, this would be, it would permit allow topless activity and entertainers must retain, maintain required social distancing and must have taken the first dose of COVID-19 vaccine in the past 14 days and complete the second dose and act, and applicable with the six weeks of the first dose, or must take a weekly PCR test and receive, receive a negative result. Is that how the language is drafted? Or is, is it not?
For the Chair, currently the language is drafted as it's in the, in the package there, which is allowable, open May 11th, 2021, 11:59 PM.
Okay.
All applicable social distancing, hygiene and performance rules established within state.
All right, so I would like to, I mean, if that's, if that is amenable with everybody, this is what, I, I had this conversation with Chairwoman Kirk Patrick from Clark County. This is what they had recommended for their, their authority. Obviously their, their occupancy limits are different than ours, but, but also is their social distancing. So I would, I would say, so specifically permitted to allow topless activity to return, entertainers must maintain required social distancing. Another bullet point, second bullet point would be must have taken first dose of COVID-19 vaccine and, and be past 14 days and complete the second dose, if applicable, within six weeks of the first dose, or must take a weekly COVID PCR test and receive a negative result to resume work within the, the establishment. This is with the April 8th, 2021 Guidance of the Medical Advisory Team for Karaoke must to follow state rules as well. Is that amenable, Mr. Solero, to, to that language into the, are you okay with that? Yes, sure.
Yeah, I mean, that is.
I'm getting, I'm kind of getting like a, is that, would that be too challenging? Okay.
No, I think, I think I got it.
All right. All right, those are, that would be my amendment and I, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the plan to allow that, to these establishments to open under that authority effective May 11th, 2021, at 11:59 PM.
Second.
I have a second for that motion. Any further discussion on this? I do have public comment. I will call public comment at this time. So Madam Clerk, will you please call public comment?
In chambers, we have Mr. Kenji Otto.
Okay, the only thing I, I would like to say on this is a thing, it's great that we're opening everybody up regardless of what anybody thinks of anything. And I, again, I'd like to recommend that you Google humans breathe out carbon dioxide to, it's a very, they have some very interesting articles of how carbon dioxide affects the human body. And also, I'd like to ask that the commissioners look at amending the group to take the children out of the equation that was brought up on the first meeting so that, and it says, it would say counts adults and that, that should alleviate, alleviate the children having to be counted in that as far as groups, and that would be fair to them. And then I would last, and also I would like to recommend that you take, you listen to my Commissioner Herman for my district and, and the resolution that she's asking you to, to look at. I think that's very important. And the, as far as, I'd like you to look at Washoe County as its own independent county more so, I do realize you have to check with, you know, work with Clark County because it's, it is one of the largest county here, but we are an independent county. We are, also have our own way of doing things. And I don't agree with a lot of things that, what has become, because I used to live in Vegas back in the seventies and I don't like what it's become. I just, and I don't want to see Washoe County even getting close to that disgusting situation that they're in. And that's pretty much all I have and I'd like to thank you all of you for, for your great work that I believe that you're, you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Otto.
I have nobody else signed in.
Seeing no further public comment, we'll close public comment. We have a, a motion in a second. I will, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes on the screen. And we are on to item 13, Mr. Manager. Thank you very much, everyone.
Item 13 is a discussion and direction to staff regarding legislation or legislative issues proposed by legislators by Washoe County Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District or by other entities permitted by the Nevada State Legislature to submit bill draft requests or such legislative issues as may be deemed by the Chair of the Board to be critically significant to Washoe County.
All right. Mr. Manager, do you have any updates you'd like to provide to the board at this time on regards to legislative process?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would just point out the report that the board received for this week. At the top, you'll see SB 297, which is the Community Garden Legislation that offers abatement for those folks that, those owners that decide to, to move forward with community gardens or urban gardens, as there sometimes are referred to. So the recommendation is to support that legislation as it moves forward. The, I guess the other good news is the China Springs budget was actually approved at a much higher level than what we had anticipated. So that's good news in terms of being able to continue to provide services there, although there's some work that needs to be done to identify how to improve, either to improve the service delivery or refine it. And then I, I believe the, the last one is AB 424, which is the pre-trial release bill, which is emerging as problematic for. So what this would do is it accelerates the expectation for how quickly inmates are processed. And the net effect of it, the financial impact could be rather significant for us in terms of having to staff on weekends and holidays at the courts, Sheriff's Office and, and in others aspects of, of the county. So those, those are the three updates. Commissioner Hill, did I miss anything?
Thank you. I just would like to point out the AB 33 passed out of the Senate Judiciary without amendment, so congratulations on that as well. But yeah, so just a support on SB 297 and then a recommendation for, what do we call it? It's denial? No.
Support, opposition.
Opposition, sorry, for AB 424.
Great. Yes, and Commissioner Hill has done a phenomenal job this last week. I have not been able to be as active as she has and she's been doing a great job with staff and working on a number of those things down there, so thank you, Commissioner Hill, for that. Yeah, AB 424 is something we've heard before here at, in previous sessions. The challenges of that through our courtrooms have been challenging at most, you know. I think until we have a 24-hour court system, it would be very difficult for us to facilitate. So with the recommendations brought forward by Commissioner Hill and the Manager Brown, I would look for a motion of.
Move to support.
Move to support. SB 297, Commissioner Jung?
Yes.
Okay, hold on one second.
Sorry, I'm withdrawing my motion.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. No, and I'm fully supportive of 297. One of the things that I know that has been a real stumbling block for this is local permitting in jurisdiction.
Hundred percent.
It's been a nightmare for soulful seeds to get up and running because it's just, it's just so constrained. And of course, the local jurisdiction said the state was pushing. As an example, on our campus, the Our Place Campus, they were going to make soulful seeds originally have a fire hydrant for their garden. I'm not understanding why a fire hydrant would be necessary, and so I don't know if we can somehow loosen those restrictions to, it's a garden for crying out loud. These are wonderful community assets, wonderful community assets, and, I mean, nothing is more cathartic than getting your hands out in the soil and making something grow and then getting to eat it. I mean, just nothing. So I'm highly supportive of this, and I'm hopeful that we can come back and loosen some of our local restrictions and engage our partners, our municipal partners, to do the same. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Commissioner John, I have you sign in.
It's exactly what I wanted to put on the record, that the Vice Chairman put on the record. I think that there has to be a culture change, too, here. You know, we're always talking about all these other agencies that have toxic cultures, but sometimes I feel like we do ourself a disservice because we hire people who love to say no. They love to look at the restrictions and go, no, 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 rather than, let me help you, talk to, let's talk to your Commissioner, maybe she has some funds. Does a cyclone fence make any sense for a garden that's completely being erected out of blood, sweat, and tears of volunteers? And I know that our staff said, well, it's the state that's doing that, and that's great. Now we can go back and say, and we are petitioning our state to stop doing that. But I do want to ask the Manager to please get his staff on board, that we need more creative ways to look at problem solving, rather than, I can, any artificial intelligence can look at a land use paper and say, no, I want the human back and forth engagement, I want that staff member to reach out to me and say, this is the issue, this is where we're at, and offer me at least three solutions that I've always asked staff for, not two, don't put me in an ultimatum, give me at least three, I'd love 15, but don't give me either or, I'm not a child, and I'm not going to take an ultimatum from you, I just don't see staff doing that, and that needs to be part of the new normal, better than normal, and that is creative problem solving and really thinking, now, come on, you're not dealing with a Tesla corporation here, you're dealing with three volunteers, but yes, they should put up a $15,000 fence, it makes zero sense to me. And that's a culture change. And unfortunately, people that go into this work, they love being regulators, they love to say no. It's a cheap thrill, and it's good that we have them, right? Because we do need people that say, no, you cannot put a lead pipe through here for drinking water, right? I love those naysayers, but there's also a part of them that is not developed, that is also not connected to the fact that they don't have a job if they always say no, and I'm happy to lay that off, I'm good there. But if they're always saying no, and they're not doing creative problem solving and figuring out ways, if you need a revenue source for this, or a way to work this around, to go look for it. Instead, it is a simple, flat no, and I don't think anybody in America today is going to put up with that anymore. And I want to put this, the staff on notice here, when this passes at the state level, I do expect you to come back here, through here with your development code, and tell us where you would like some more gray area, so we can give you that gray area. Tell us where the problems are, rather than it bouncing between Commissioners trying to get an answer. Staff should be letting me know that, not the constituent, especially not a volunteer constituent. This is not a lobbyist, this is not a professional, multi-billion-dollar Fortune 500 company, these are average citizens like you and me. And that has to stop here, that is a whole culture that needs to be changed, reevaluated, maybe we need to ask people to kindly leave the county, take their retirement and get the hell out, and we can hire new people. I mean, I'm all for that, I get it, that when the culture changes, we need different change agents to do that as well. I'm happy to see you right on out of here, because this has been, for 14 years in August, one of my biggest complaints here, of complete, out of touch, out of sense, out of time, of what it is you do, where you function in this situation, and also, we want you to be creative, because ultimately, we want new solutions to old problems, not the same, here's the use table, you know, I mean, AI can do that, we don't need staff for that, just hire a software system, very easy. So I want staff to be aware that we took a stand on this because of the messing around we've put up with for too long.
Don't tell me no, tell me how.
I've said that forever, don't tell me why I can't do this, you show me how I get around this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that is done off the soapbox today. Thank you.
Commissioner John, so in front of us today, obviously, is support for our SB 297, and then opposition for AB 424. So I would look for a motion to support that. I have a motion from Commissioner John. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Hill, so a motion and a second. No further public comment on this item. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously with all Commissioners voting. Please affirm your votes on the screen. All right, let's get to the last business of the day, folks, we are into our public hearings.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yes.
I was looking at the bills of interest, and I was conferring to make sure that I had the right bill, and I believe one of the bills was for AB 424.
Correct.
And I don't see it on the list.
It's not on the list.
Of bills of interest.
Mm-hmm.
You can change the vote.
I noticed it wasn't on the list.
Well, we're gonna take, we're gonna, we're gonna let it ride.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. All right, let's move on. I'm going, let's move on, and we will go into item 14. So this is our first public hearing, and this is a public hearing for a first reading of an ordinance, so Madam Clerk, will you please read us into this item?
This item actually has two first readings. The first one will be Bill Number 1857, and ordinance amending ordinance number 1,000 in order to change the boundaries of District 24 groundwater remediation and providing other matters relating thereto and effective date thereof. The other one, would you like them both, or would you like one introduced and then the other one?
We'll do them both at the same time.
Okay.
Can you read them both?
The second ordinance on this item is Bill Number 1858, and ordinance imposing a fee on the parcels of land in Washoe County, Nevada District Number 24, groundwater remediation to pay the cost of developing and carrying out a plan for remediation, and prescribing other matters relating thereto.
All right. Looking, at this time, looking for an introduction, Vice Chairman.
Mr. Chair, so this is, this is a common occurrence that we've seen of changing the boundaries of the groundwater remediation district. I would move that to introduce 18, Bill Number 1857 and 1858, with a second reading to occur on June 8th, 2021.
Fantastic, and this is a public hearing that, for those introductions and that first reading, there is, I have no public comments signed in at this time. Madam Clerk, do you have any signed in with you for emails or?
I have nobody signed in and no emails.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Seeing no public comment, this is, those two bills are introduced. All right, and then now we are on to item 15. This is the second reading and possible adoption. Madam Clerk.
This item will be ordinance number 1668, if passed, and ordinance pursuing to Nevada revised statute 278.0201 through 278.0207, adopting a development agreement between Washoe County and Moonlight Hills Estates LLC regarding tentative subdivision map case number WTM 16-002 Golden Mason North, a subdivision of two parcels totaling 119.76 acres into a 115-lot subdivision which was approved on March 7th, 2017. This agreement extends the deadline for filing the first in a series of final subdivision maps from March 7th, 2021 to March 7th, 2023. The subject site is located north of Golden Valley Road and east of Estates Drive. The parcels are located within the North Valleys Area Plan, the North Valley Citizen Advisory Board, and Washoe County Commission District Number 5, APN numbers 552-092-22 and 552-050-01, and it was formerly Bill Number 1856.
Madam Clerk, can I get the ordinance number one more time?
1668.
Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment in regarding to the second reading or adoption of the ordinance?
There is nobody signed in.
All right, seeing no public comment for the public hearing, at this time, looking for a motion. Commissioner Herman, do you want to introduce this one?
Okay.
Vice Chairman?
Having found the agreement consistent with the master plan, the maintenance of the current development approval is in the best interest of the county, the development agreement promotes the public interest and welfare by maintaining consistency, and that its sufficient terms and conditions of approval are in place to protect the interests of the public and the developer, I move to adopt ordinance number 1668, as provided by the county clerk.
All right. I have a motion to adopt the adortance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hill, seeing no further public comment, call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes on your screens.
Commissioner Herman? There you go, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. That concludes all of our public hearings for today. We are on to our item 16. Mr. Manager, is there a final public comment?
Item 16 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, is there anybody signed in for public comment?
I have nobody signed in.
All right, seeing no further public comment, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the Board. Item 17, this is our final Commissioners and County Managers announcements. Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
No, no, Mr. Chair.
Commissioners, once, twice? Adjourned, thank you.